Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Holden Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have most trustees attending in person with a few participating remotely. In order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. For those in the boardroom, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. For those attending remotely, please remember to turn on your microphone and cameras when you are recognized to speak, and please turn off your cameras and mics otherwise. Trustees, please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the floor, your mics will be muted. We have guests online tonight, and I would like to extend a very warm welcome to them. We have our delegate and Ms. Alleen Huggins of Koski Minsky present with us tonight. Land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and oath of citizenship. I ask staff to please lead us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holden, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Our many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
It's honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledged and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Trustee Bowie, could you now please lead us in the opening prayer, national anthem, and oath of citizenship?
I ask you to please all join me in making the sign of our faith in you, Father, Son, and Spirit. Dear Lord, as we meet here today, let us be filled with your Spirit. Wherever we go, let us spread love, joy, and peace as we pray for all those who are in the back of the door. Let us desire to become more like you and worship you in all that we do. We thank you for the opportunity to meet today and to spread love and compassion in our community. Guide us to be wise and thoughtful in our decisions, in our actions, and to do justice. In your Father, Son. Anthem.
With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God give us land, glorious land. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Motion adopted in camera. There were no motions adopted in camera. Information received in camera. Vice Chair Agnew, please read the information received in camera.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. The following information was received in camera. Department head guidance. Michelle Power appointed to the position of department head guidance effective September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, for a period of up to four years. Acting department head of English. Laura Basolini appointed to the position of acting department head English effective September the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, for a period of up to one year. Curriculum consultant generalist. Siobhan Crossden appointed to the position of curriculum consultant generalist effective October the third, twenty twenty-two. The term of this position is up to three years. We had a resignation. Melissa Denny resigned from the board effective October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. In our hiring, we have Nadia Miklovich hired as a probationary teacher effective September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Keegan Lee Guide and Mary Adigboy, and I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce that right, hired as a probationary teacher effective September the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Marissa Malin Drew Collo hired as a probationary teacher effective September the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Agatha Hanson hired as a probationary teacher effective October the sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. We move on to the next order of business, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, additions, or corrections to the agenda? I see Trustee Murphy, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to put forward a notice of motion.
Trustee Murphy, can you state the title of your notice of motion?
Title is Anti-Black Racism Strategic Plan. And I've forwarded the written notice to Rosie.
It's Anti-Black Racism Strategic Plan, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Trustee DeRosa, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving the opportunity to put forward a notice of motion myself.
Can you state the title of your notice of motion, Trustee DeRosa?
Yes, Mr. Chair, legal, parliamentary, and consulting expenses. I will forward to Rosie in the next couple of minutes as well.
So can you repeat the title, legal?
Legal, parliamentary, and consulting expenses.
So Trustee Murphy, your item will be ten point two in the agenda, and Trustee DeRosa, your item will be ten point three in the chair. Trustee Murphy, your hand is still up there? No, sorry. Seeing no other items to be added to the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Looking for a mover.
Murphy.
Move by Trustee Murphy. Looking for a second, please.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Agnew. I'll take this recorded vote. Trust, Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
Trustee Carabella. Yes, sorry, I'm going to abstain.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
Trustee Uhan Chanara.
In favor.
Trustee Guzo.
In favor.
We have six in favor, one abstained. The motion carries. The agenda is approved. Trustees, I just want to make a statement here. When we get to item thirteen, open question period, we shall be following the process as laid out in our procedural bylaw number thirteen. At the last board meeting, we had an unprecedented number of questions, and quite frankly, I was caught off guard, and I apologize that we did not follow the bylaws as written. So moving forward, we shall follow bylaw thirteen as written. Moving on to the next order of business, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to the next order of business, which is presentations. Item four point one, senior staff update. Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. We have a report, two presentations today in one, and they are relevant to two topic areas. One is Catholic school councils, the other is school generated funds. And for the former, we have Superintendent Denalfo. And for school generated funds, Superintendent Lofts. So I'd call upon Superintendent Denalfo to begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to share this evening with the Board of Trustees the report on our Catholic school councils and our Catholic Parent Involvement Committee. In all our schools, our Catholic school councils have been formed, and I'm pleased to share with you that we have a strong number of parents on many of our Catholic school councils. The next two slides indicate the number of parents per secondary school at first, and then on our elementary schools. We've had many, many parents coming out, and the schools have welcomed all parents an opportunity to participate in their Catholic school council and have amended their bylaws to allow for this. Our Catholic school councils have been formed, aligned to policy II twenty-three, where the majority of parents on our Catholic school councils are Catholic. Councils are reviewing their bylaws and will be reporting back at their next school council meeting. Secondary schools are reviewing their uniform policy together with their Catholic school council, student council, and staff. Our Catholic Parent Involvement Committee, CPIC, supports all our Catholic school councils. CPIC will be running a new Catholic school council training for newly appointed co-chairs on November second. And CPIC is planning a variety of parent engagement sessions focused on, first, our faith between homeschool and parish, that their season of Advent and Lent, with the first one being on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, at six thirty, led by Patricia Del Ben and Julian Federico. Their next focus to student mental health and wellbeing, and followed by responsible digital citizenship and appropriate use of social media. We are looking forward to our first council chairs meeting in person this year on November twenty-third at St. Nicholas School, and all trustees are invited to that session. And we will have Dr. Jean Clinton presenting to our parents. The next portion of the presentation is with regards to school generated funds. Through CPIC, we had some feedback that more transparency was necessary for school generated funds, together with business services. We're sharing this report, and Superintendent Lofts is available for questions after we present this. School generated funds. The province provides funding for the construction of new schools and additions for repairs and renovations for the operation and maintenance of schools, including the heating, lighting, and cleaning, and for staffing, including supply teachers. Fund raised for school purposes are used to complement, not replace, publicly funded education. So acceptable use for school generated funds. There's a lot of fundraising that happens at the school or the activity fees that's collected for secondary. But there's appropriate uses for school generated funds, and certain things are not to be used with school generated funds. So what's acceptable are field trips and activities or other excursions, athletic programs, sports equipment, guest speakers and presentations for students, but not for staff, ceremonies, awards, scholarships, anniversaries, and assistance of funds for students in need. What's not acceptable for school generated funds are staff professional developments, baked the activities, meals, snacks, or gifts for staff, courier postage, or shredding services, consumables, textbooks, and other items funded through provincial grants, furniture for classrooms or offices. So school generated funds are to be used directly to benefit our students and to be used in the year that the fundraising activities took place. Participation in any fundraising activity is voluntary. So through this review, together with business services, the schools have been presented, all principals have been presented in consultation with their Catholic school councils, so that there's assistance to the Catholic school councils, to the principals, and to the secretaries and financial clerks who do this reporting around fundraising. And what we're doing is giving new reports that will be a little bit easier for everyone to read, and so the presentations have already taken place. We had the CPIC presentation last night. The presentation was presented to school administrators and secretaries at the end of the summer, and we will do whatever additional supports needed through the Catholic school councils. The report for your plan with what you're doing with your school generated funds is due to your family school superintendent, will later then November thirtieth, and upon approval will be posted to all school websites. The due date aligns with many of the elementary schools fundraising campaigns, which are usually held in October. For twenty-two, twenty-three school year, schools have received this new template, and it ties to the reporting to the Catholic school council three times per year. And that will be in November, February, and May. The new resource that the schools have been provided is pre-populated with carryforward totals for the numbers for specific amounts per school. There's a summary tab that provides estimated totals for all funds, including funds raised, funds carried forward, and how the funds will be used throughout the year. There's a list of planned fundraisers for the year, including costs and their attended use of the plan. This allows for more consistency between schools, particularly for parents with children in multiple schools. Schools should keep in mind that the funds raised in the school year should benefit the students attending the school that year. And there's carryforward guidelines that are provided to schools. So for elementary, they can carry forward thirty-five dollars per student, and for secondary, one hundred dollars per student. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Superintendent Denalfo. Trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent Denalfo? Trustee Murphy, you have your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Superintendent Alphol or Superintendent Lofts. I think the changes to the school generated funds is fantastic. I think it will make it easier and more transparent. So the one question I have is, you know, when you look through some of the reports where there are now, there are some balances that are larger than what would be acceptable. What is the strategy going forward to deal with those? Is it going to remain on a go-forward basis? Or are they going to be consolidated? Or are they going to be, you know, are they going to be lessened? Are the fees going to be lessened? Activity fees going to be lessened until that amount is absorbed?
Superintendent Denalfo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Murphy, I'll start the response. You may need some clarification through Superintendent Lofts. So right now, what's happening is the schools are meeting together with their Catholic school councils. They're going to share those amounts that have been carried forward from last year, so they'll come up with a comprehensive plan. So together with the Catholic school councils, they can identify what their goals are for this year. Then they can review. So then they can understand, do they actually need to collect an additional activity fee for next year? If they're not going to be spending it and carrying that money forward, then they can make that decision around that activity fee or additional fees that they're charging the students, right? So we are aware that the secondary schools do have a lot of money, so there needs to come up with a robust plan of what they're doing with the money this year. And if they're not carrying it, if they're not going to spend it, they can then revisit what they're going to do for twenty-three, twenty-four. And will they need to collect an activity fee? They make that decisions together with their Catholic school council this year.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Do you have a follow?
So that's going to be tracked over. It's going to take some time, obviously, to deal with some of those balances. So I would assume over the next few years, the superintendents will keep their eye on that and have those ongoing discussions with the view that we need to be compliant at each school, and we need to get within those ranges. I'm assuming, not to put words in your mouth, but I'm assuming that's how it would be handled.
Superintendent Denalfo.
The message is, one of the things that the schools can spend the money on is technology. So that's one avenue that the government has allowed, that we can use school generated funds. So we've encouraged the secondary schools that, you know, if you need additional technology or for some of the STEM initiatives that you're doing at the schools, that's a good way to start spending the money. But we also know that the schools may have some projects that haven't actually come to fruition yet because they didn't have enough money, if they were doing a major something for the school, whatever that may be. We need to understand what the schools may be planning for. Each of the family school superintendents has two schools. Superintendent Del Sorto has one, so it's our responsibility to follow through with the schools on what they're doing with it.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great, great program. It's nice to see the changes. I think they're going to benefit us all moving forward. Good work.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Moving down the speaker list, we have Trustee Chua, Trustee Carabella, and Vice Chair Agnew, and Superintendent Lofts. Superintendent Lofts, do you want to add something right now?
If I could, Mr. Chair, just to kind of complement with Superintendent Alphol just mentioned, technology, the ministry does provide us funding for technology as well, but the SGF can be used to complement that funding that we receive from the ministry for technology. So I just want to make sure it was understood that we are provided for funding from the ministry for technology. It's just we're allowed to complement that funding. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Lofts, Trustee Chua, you have your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Superintendent Denalfo or Superintendent Lofts. I was just wondering, in regards to our Catholic school councils and both our secondary and elementary school sectors, do we have student representatives representing each school in our Catholic school councils?
Superintendent Denalfo.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question. So at the secondary level, we do have representatives from, like student representatives on the Catholic school council. It's not as prevalent in elementary. It's not an expectation in elementary, but some elementaries do have it. But secondary, they do have representatives from the students on their council.
No? Okay, thank you. Trustee Chua, Trustee Carabella, you have your hands up. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm remembering in the past, sorry, hang on. I don't know, my camera doesn't work, so excuse that. So I'm wondering about, in the past, we've usually have the student-generated funds also includes fundraising for charities, because I remember the amount being about, I don't know, well, thirteen million before COVID. And so where is this listed, or will this be listed in the report on school-generated funds?
Superintendent Lofts, Superintendent Lofts.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I don't believe that was part of the discussion tonight, Trustee Carabella. I'm a little confused on the question, to be quite honest.
Trustee Carabella.
Well, the question is about, in the past, in our budgets and that, under school-generated funds. I realize it hasn't been brought up in this presentation, but usually, school-generated funds also included the amount raised by schools for charities for fundraising, realizing that it goes to the charity, but it still gets recorded as a generated fund, although it doesn't stay in our schools and used for our students, obviously. So I'm just wondering, because it's not part of this report, it still does get listed, and I'm wondering where it gets listed. And does each school list their charities they have fundraised for, and how much each one generated? Do they do that at the end of the year? Thank you.
Certainly. I may start with, sorry, Mr. Chair, through you. Trustee Carabella, I know when we bring our reports back, we just have it as a aggregate number that we bring back, at least from us in the finance departments. When we bring that forward, it'll just be the total of school-generated, school-generated funds for the year, either the revenue and the expense from that, as well as the carryforward. Usually mention how much we have remaining in our budget, at least our budget and our financial statements. I do know that part of this new presentation, for the school level, we do have an area on there for external charities, but that's on the school level. It's not something that we necessarily aggregate up to the board level. It's something that's brought through at the school level. So I think that might be where the confusion was. I thought meant that at the board level, we don't necessarily break that down for our financial statements, external charities and such.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, I'll just point out that this is a presentation brought forth by staff. This is part of our monthly presentations. It's not a financial report, just to clarify that. Trustee Carabella, do you have a question?
I do. Just to follow up on that. Thank you for the explanation, I realize now. Okay, but so each school lists that. Is that at the end of the year on their website? I think I remember seeing that. I'm just confirming that.
Yeah, it's actually, we've standardized the reporting, so it'll be part of the reporting on a month. I would call it quarterly, but really, it's only three times a year that we report at the school level, normally in November, February, and May. So at those periods of time, there'll be a report, a standardized report on these schools' website, which is something that we introduced last night to the CPIC, is where we introduced it. Actually, we introduced it to the schools a little earlier, but we introduced it publicly yesterday to CPIC.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Carabella, down the speaker's list, we have Vice Chair Agnew.
Great. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. To Superintendent Denalfo, the question's been answered a little bit, but I just was wondering. We have some schools that do some of their fundraising activities sort of upfront in the year. We see Halloween dances. We see some other things like that. And then we see some schools that have their fundraising initiatives traditionally towards the end of the year. It could be a barbecue, could be something else. And so just being cognizant of how much can be carried over, is there going to be maybe suggestions on how to handle late fundraising activities as far as what if they generate way too much revenue? Or would there be some suggestions to perhaps look at doing some of those fundraising activities sort of upfront in the year? Just wondering, because again, you know, if a school's going to have one at the end of the year and raise a ton of money, you know, and maybe, again, you sort of answered the question a little bit, that they have to be prepared on how to spend that, but I wonder if that could create a little bit of a headache, if you will.
Superintendent Denalfo.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and to Trustee Agnew. That's a great question, Trustee Agnew. So first of all, schools traditionally, elementary and secondary, you're supposed to have one major fundraising event for the year. You could have minor if it's very specific what you're fundraising for, okay? So if you're really clear with your community. So that's why schools do it earlier in the year and not leave it to the end of the year, because fundraising money is supposed to be spent during the year, so that the students who are part of that school community could have benefited from that, right? So if a school's doing a later fundraiser, you just need to know, you need to communicate to your school what it is that you're fundraising for, and then that would be a conversation with the family school superintendent with business services, maybe why that particular school would be having a larger carryforward, would need to have a larger carryforward. So I'm thinking, like, if it was something the school was fundraising for, like intentionally, like, that's just a communication that needs to be happening. Like, that's just a communication that needs to be happening with the family school superintendent, then we'll go back to business services. We wouldn't take, like, if that's where you were doing it, it was for something, like, we're going to be reasonable with that, right?
Okay, thank you, superintendent.
Vice Chair, do you have a follow? Thank you. Moving down the speakers list, we have trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I'm delighted that there is some conversation going on around this topic. And there was progress on. It seems that there is good progress coming forward. I'm curious, tonight I heard superintendent Denalfo mention the fact that there isn't a. An allowable carry forward amount per student. Which which raises a question in my mind, and it's probably strictly a mathematical exercise that may not have been done. But if the carry forward balance as we speak, and I know that normally it's between three and a half to four million dollars a year. Have we done the calculation? To see whether that, let's assume it's thirty-five, three point five million dollars. And we compute the allowable amount per student. Do we know whether that that amount is? Accurate, too high, or even too low for that for that matter? Just to give us a comfort on on the balance that is being carried forward, whether it's within allowable limits. I'm not sure whether we can answer that question or not. Might be interesting to look into if we can't answer it now.
Again, I think you're getting into an entrance. I'd like to say that we stick to this presentation. This presentation is is meant to highlight the. Good work that we do in our schools and so the changes coming to our parents. So let's stick to to the presentation. And have this financial discussion at a different point in time. So trustee.
I believe superintendent Loft might add, might wanted to add a comment. He had his hand up, but.
Okay, Lieutenant Loft, would you like to to answer the question as it pertains to the presentation, please?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair, just a a little bit of clarification. Actually, last year, our carry forward for school generated funds was two point four six million dollars. So it had been higher into threes between three and a half and four. But last year, because of COVID, it actually, we utilized a lot of that carry forward. And our carry forward at the end of the year was two point four six two million. I will also mention that the hundred dollars per secondary student and thirty-five dollars for elementary student. It's not a, it's a suggestion. It's not necessarily a rule or hard fast rule. And how that number came to be was essentially thirty-five dollars for any kind of projects. That may span over a accounting period. So whether the school could be saving up for a specific purchase. And it may take a couple of years of fundraising and such to get the funding for that. The remaining sixty-five dollars to get to a hundred dollars for the secondary schools is essentially just the activity fee. Where we, the activity fees are paid in the year before they're actually utilized for the students coming in. So if you're in grade eight, you'd pay the sixty-five dollars in your, sorry, if you're going into grade nine. You would pay that sixty-five dollars in grade eight, even though you're getting ready, that money is to be used for the upcoming school year. With respect to, I think the the last question that trustee De Rosa had was if we've actually looked at the dollar amount of that carry forward. Yes, we have, just looking in in the simple math. On the secondary panel, it's about one point three million or so, roughly thirteen thousand students, a little bit above. Would be about one point three million. On the elementary panel, about twenty-three thousand students or so, with thirty-five dollars. It's about eight hundred thousand. So combined, you're looking at about two point one. And I mentioned before that we were two point four six two carry forward for last year, for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. This year is, I don't have the numbers for this year as of yet because we're still going through the budget process.
So may I have my follow-up question, Mr. Chair?
Let's stick to the presentation, please.
Yes, of course. So that's, thank you, superintendent Loft. That's exactly the feeling I was, I did. The estimate I was looking for. It gives me a an order of magnitude and. More importantly, how closer, how much closer we are getting to what that number should be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Up next is trustee Uhun Chanara. Trustee Uhun Chanara, you're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to superintendent Denalfo and superintendent Lofts. Very quickly and for the sake of time, fantastic. It's a great move and start forward, and I'm sure after our councils and our schools and our superintendents use it this year. I'm sure maybe suggestions will come back to make it easier to use. So it's fantastic. And I and I just wanted to say on behalf of the Hall and Catholic District School Board, to see all that parent involvement. In all those councils is amazing, you know. I was on council for almost like, what, fourteen years? And every year would be different. Sometimes it'd be eight, sometimes it'd be sixteen. So that really says a lot about our Hall and Catholic District School Board that our parents want to get that involved. So so that's amazing. Well done. Thank you.
And I think I missed trustee Guzzo, but it was not intentional. Trustee Guzzo, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. It's okay. I'll I'll give you that one tonight, Mr. Chair. Just just a comment. Thank you very much for this. It's great. I think it's it's. It's really good for everybody to know and see it outlined. I know there was a couple of questions here. I can tell you that. In September, it was already, everybody's was already pretty much posted on their school board websites. In the new format. So to superintendent Denalfo and superintendent Lofts, but superintendent Lofts, I think. I think we need to to clarify though, because I know the student fees for this year that we got charged actually are for this year. Not the year before. So you're paying in the current year. I think I heard you mention that you're paying the year before for the next year. That's not how it's been being administered in Oakville, Oakville schools, just for clarity.
Maybe I'll just, sorry, Mr. Chair. Yeah, go, Mr. Chair, and through you. I'll I'll go then. Typically, you're you're right. I know there has been some schools and trustee Guzzo that have collected for this year, and you're correct, they are for this year. But typically, you pay your fees, your activity fee when you do your option sheets. So normal, in a normal situation, a typical situation, you would pay your fees when you do your option sheets, which typically are in the springtime for the upcoming year. But you're correct, there are some schools that are still collecting the fees for the current year. So maybe I was generalizing a little too much on that comment. But that was more in a typical situation. You would pay it the year before for the upcoming year. But you're right, there have been some schools that have paid it. That students have been paying in the current year for the current year.
Yeah, just maybe if I can just through superintendent Lofts, now that we have these wonderful reports that are standard across. All of our schools, maybe if you can just clarify that, you know, that carryover, even though that carryover, because. One of the things I noticed is it was posted, let's say, the end of June of twenty twenty-two. There's still bills and expenses that are being paid before you get even coming into September. That are for the previous calendar year. So they're not really a true carryover. And it's really difficult to to kind of point those out. And I think that a lot of people miss that. You can just maybe.
Yeah, once again, trustee Guzzo. Yes, I'd like to stay to the presentation. Okay.
I can maybe just from finances perspective, through you, Mr. Chair. We do our best. We don't know necessarily all the upcoming fees that could be coming out. So we have to pick through all that line in the sand in order for us to kind of put down with the balances as of September first. You're correct, some of those invoices could come in after September first, but they apply for the previous year. And those are things that the school would have to update when they get the report. We can only do so much at the central level to kind of populate those balances. We kind of tried to do that to make it easier on the schools. Whether we succeeded or not, we'll find out, I guess, as the information comes back to us. But that was our intent to kind of try to do our best guess as to what the carry forward would be. Without necessarily knowing what every single school may have coming coming through that really were expenditures related to the previous year. As we get feedback throughout the year, I'm hoping we can make adjustments. So this is our first attempt at it, and we're definitely open for changes to to go. And I know there will be changes as we kind of get into a little bit more, and there may be permutations that we haven't thought of. How to handle when this was designed and we'll adjust accordingly.
Yeah, just no, just a comment. Thank you very much to superintendent Denalfo and superintendent Lofts. It's great to see and looking forward to returning to council of chairs and in in-person CPIC meetings. So that's great. Thanks so much.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. You have your floor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just. See if my camera is working. Okay, it does not work. Oh, there it goes. Okay, so I'm. I wanted clarity on the activities fee because I understand it is voluntary. And when parents receive the request for it, is that made clear to them?
Yeah, and through you, Mr. Chair. It is voluntary. I'm not necessarily at the school level. I would assume it's it's made clear, but again, I I'm not sure. Trustee Carabella. It's not something that that I, that we in finance necessarily see or how the wording is when it's sent out to the parents. Though I should remind everyone that there are definitely things attached to that. To those activity fees as well. So there definitely is a service being provided for those activity fees. So it's not just a volunteer fee with nothing attached to it. Again, though, it's it's kind of pertinent on the on the individual schools to kind of inform the the parent community what is included. I know. This, as being a parent myself, I know yearbooks and things like that are are part of that activity fee. And I do realize as well that it is, and me, speaking as a parent, I do understand that it's also an optional fee as well. But I I don't want to necessarily speak for the other schools. I'm assuming it would happen, but again, I've never confirmed.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Do you have a follow-up question?
Well, I think that is it not board policy that it has to be explicitly. Clear that it's voluntary. So maybe I can follow up with a superintendent or to find out if that's being done.
I'll pass this to the chair of policy. Trustee Guzzo, could you elaborate on that?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. It's actually in the procedure. And it and I can speak to Oakville specifically. And trustees would have received all of the welcome back emails as well through their board, through that board send out. And it is very explicitly listed that it is a voluntary fee. It just varies. What I saw was different varying. What those fees pay for. It varies sometimes between school to school. But yearbooks, as superintendent Lofts said, was very specific. And as a parent, as of a high school student in Oakville. And paying attention to that, yes, it's it's made very clear. And it's outlined what exactly. And I can only speak for Oakville, but I I would assume that if Oakville's all there. And the principal that I have now at STA came from Burlington, so I would assume the same was at Burlington. And Milton and Halton Hills. Because it sounds like it's pretty standard, the way I've seen it written, so.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustee Carabella. Do you have any further question on this?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Next up on the speakers list is trustee Murphy.
Just to follow up what trustee Guzzo was saying, if most people pay through school cash online, it's very explicit. That it's voluntary. In fact, almost everything on there, there's a column that says optional. So all of the fees are optional, and most people pay that way. So it's very explicit that it is voluntary. And that's that's for everybody. That's not by region.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I do not see any other hands up. So superintendent Denalfo and superintendent Loft. Thank you so much for your presentation. Director Klein, I must say, I'm very pleased to see our parents engaged in our schools across the system. Want to thank you and thank your staff for for the good work they've been doing in our schools. Thank you. Moving on to the next order of business is delegations. We have one delegation this evening of delegates.
Hi, I'm here.
This is next. Never let them know when the ground rules are here. You will have precisely ten minutes to present. There will be an alarm going off at nine minutes. At a ten-minute mark, you will end your presentation. After present, the presentation trustees will have three minutes to ask two clarifying. Responses on the presentation only. So. Are you ready to do your presentation?
So the first.
It's on regional. The first delegation is on regional programs. Delegate is Ms. McDougald. You have ten minutes for your presentation and you can start right now.
Great. Good evening, Chair, Director Klein, trustees, staff and guests. I'm excited to talk to you today about the opportunity to introduce regional programs into our school board. My name is Lori McDougald and I have two children in elementary school at St. Luke's in Oakville. So St. Luke's is a small K to eight school. I know some of you are quite familiar with it. And our population has been steadily declining. In fact, enrollment is down about thirty percent in the last four years alone. Merely two hundred meters to the east is our neighborhood public school, which is at a hundred and twenty percent capacity. And fifty percent of that school is enrolled in French immersion. St. Luke's is not unique. As neighborhoods change and evolve, there is a number of neighborhood schools that are well below capacity. And I feel are at risk of closure if and when the province lifts its moratorium on school closures that it implemented in twenty seventeen. The loss of neighborhood schools is extremely disruptive for families and communities. It can be devastating as they, as neighborhood schools work to bring neighbors together and they provide a safe place to meet and play. Next slide. You could try to make the argument that the vast discrepancy between the public and separate school population in my neighborhood is the result of better teachers, test scores or facilities, but that's simply not true. My school has dedicated dedicated staff and administration. Some of the highest test scores in the ward and a beautiful facility. I believe one of the key differences in the public school is that it offers specialized programs in French immersion. Between two thousand eleven and two thousand and sixteen, enrollment in French immersion has grown by twenty percent. Parents and students are drawn to French immersion for a number of reasons, such as student interest, challenging curriculum. A way to differentiate themselves in the future and even to avoid a de-streamed system. But as we know, the demand for French immersion has put a huge strain on resources. And the drive to find quality French language teachers is getting more and more difficult. Slide. So it's my opinion that while French immersion is an option, there is a growing interest and opportunity for other regional programs that could drive enrollment to schools. Like mine and bring new opportunities to students than what is currently offered anywhere else in Halton. In the last ten years, other boards have been introducing a wide variety of regional programs to not just underutilize schools, but across their entire region to meet the changing needs of students and to bolster enrollment. Programs like athletics, arts, arts and technology, business and technology, sci-tech. IB at the elementary and secondary level, and yes, French immersion. Regional programs are operated very similar to French immersion. They are applied to and using an entry point like grade four are open to students across the board and not just the local neighborhoods. Empty spaces are sometimes even awarded outside of the board. Schools that have introduced regional programs have seen incredible community support and found the desire far exceeds capacity. Statistically, these boards have found that the addition, that in addition to drawing existing students from across their board. They've also increased overall enrollment, drawing new students from the alternative boards and private schools. Students are streamed for the majority of their courses, which follow a provincial curriculum, but are supplemented based on the regional program. Teachers are hired for these classes based on their desire and personal interest and do not require additional certification. Typically, students are responsible for their own transportation and sponsors are sought to help provide resources and materials for the program. How engaged would your student be if they were surrounded by peers who shared their interest in theater? If they got to animate their own movie? If they had access to three D printers, robotics and microscopes, or were even encouraged to launch their own business? Regional programs align with the jobs and work environments our graduates are seeing. So before this comes up in question period, I will address this. Yes, during a launch and ramp up, regional programs can be viewed as inequitable. Not providing transportation can make a program in Oakville unattainable for a student in Milton. And launching in an undercapacity school can eliminate some of our new school communities and benefit more mature neighborhoods. And launching in an undercapacity school can eliminate some of our new school communities and benefit more mature neighborhoods. But the long-term goal would be to roll out programs in all wards and towns and to increase the access. And also to allow neighborhoods to input into what programs would best fit their area. I fear that not creating something perfect should not drive the decision to try new things and learn and grow. Next slide. Whilst programs do have limited enrollment, high tides lift all boats, and students in the regular stream still benefit from a regional program in many ways. Reputation can put that neighborhood school back on the map, and parents will re-enroll back in the Catholic Board in hopes of participating in this program at its entry point. A full school is a happy school. More students means more funding, more teaching resources, and more opportunities for extracurricular activities. Resources are shared too, with regular stream students. They too can use 3D printers and athletic equipment. Retention through the Catholic secondary schools, as students are fulfilled and want to remain with their social circle. And in many cases in other boards, they have a sister secondary school that has same program. In other cases, it can also even smooth enrollments, eliminating the need for busing and portables in some other schools. So to summarize, neighborhood schools are such an important part of a community. They bring neighbors together and provide a safe meeting and recreation place. I fear that my neighborhood school will one day be closed, and we will lose that place of connection. The introduction of regional programs outside of French immersion fills a need that students and parents are looking for while bolstering enrollment. A regional program can start with just one school, just one program, and grow across the board to meet the needs of each community. So I hope I've got you excited, and let's work together as trailblazers in Halton to provide a unique school experience at HCDSB. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mc. Trustees now have an opportunity to ask questions based on the presentation. Trustees, do you have questions for our presenter? I have trustee Ohan Chanada. One minute, trustee Ohan Chanada. We need to put a timer up. So trustees may now ask two questions for clarification purposes. You have three minutes for the two questions. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. McDougald. Thank you very much for that presentation. My question is very quick and clean. You mentioned other boards have regional programs, so I can do my own research. Do you have a listing of that, of the other boards that have this program right now up and running?
The most familiar board I'm with is the Peel Public School Board. I grew up in that board. They have some very long-term programs, like the Cothr Secondary School of the Arts. But in the last 10 years, they've introduced all those programs I've listed and have had huge success.
At the Peel, Peel Public, right?
Peel Public.
Okay. And I think we're all on the same side. We want everyone to go to Halton Catholic District School Board, every child that lives in our area. But thank you for the presentation very much.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for your presentation. When you say that you see decline in enrollment, you made mention of it in a couple. Can I just ask where you got your stats from?
Oh, I'm going to pull it up. There are references at the end of my presentation. I took them directly from the Halton website. I guess it's the school planning section of the Halton Catholic website that shows the long-term projections for school enrollment.
Great. Follow up, Mr. Chair. And then my last question is, when you say that it brings communities together, and you talked about increasing enrollment, where do you see that enrollment coming from? Do you see that we're pulling from within? Or do you think that that whole, like, is that what you were referencing? Would we be pulling from within or from outside as well?
So just based on my knowledge of what they've seen at the Peel board, you do pull from across the Catholic board, but they've also seen students enter from other boards. So in Peel, they've pulled from Deafren Peel, and they've also pulled students from private schools in the area. So it should be a net increase of enrollment and not just cannibalization of the schools around them.
Thank you, Ms. McDougald. Trustees, I do not see any other hands up. Trustees, you have any other questions or delegate? Seeing none, I just want to thank you once again for taking the time to put this presentation together and come and talk to trustees. Thank you so much. Our response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item 8.1. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Of the minutes. The minutes of October 4th, 2022, regular board meeting is in your package. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 4th, 2022? Oh, sorry, trustee Carabella's hand up. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to see about these minutes. Where in the, where in the minutes is the board motion that shows that I'm denied the legal report to be shared with me? There's nothing in the minutes that show that the board motion where the legal report was denied being shared with me.
Trustee Carabella, I point to our bylaw. Let's go to the minutes of the meeting section. Let me just open that up. Reporting by way of minutes, bylaw 15, reporting gives what will be in the minutes. It does not give.
You're muted, Mr. Chair. I don't hear what you're saying.
Okay, so I, am I, can trustees online hear me? Trustee O'Brien, can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I can't.
Trustee Carabella, can you hear me?
Well, I heard you when you just said that now, but I didn't.
I point you to bylaw. I'll repeat once again, bylaws number 15, reporting by minutes is very. Meeting. It's a very standard practice which we have been following for years, and it sticks to the way the bylaws are written. And we put the items into the minutes as per our bylaws. We do not put the discussion that happens. The contents of the minutes is very clearly defined what goes into the minutes. So I'll suggest that you please take a look at bylaw 15.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm outraged that the legal report has not been given to me and the accountability. So I'd like to know who denied giving it to me. That should be included in the minutes. That's an important factor.
Question is very simple. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes? Do you have?
Yes.
Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Yes. Do I have the floor?
It is the addition to the minutes, and it has to be as per the bylaw 15. If you need a minute to take a look at bylaw 15, I'll give you a minute, trustee Carabella.
Well, then it has to say that the legal report was not shared with me as a trustee.
Trustee Carabella, once again, I'm again referring you to bylaw 15. 15.3 talks about the resolutions and recommendations adopted by the board. Those would be in the bylaws. It does not talk about discussions that we have. We could be talking about lots of things, but that's never, that will never appear in the minutes. I hope that's clearly understood by you, and if you need further explanation, I can provide that to you after the meeting, trustee Carabella. Moving on down to De Rosa. Trustee Carabella, you have not stated the addition to the.
You did just mention the recommendation, and the recommendation was somebody made not to share that legal report. So that's what I think has to be included.
Resolutions and recommendations adopted by the board. There was no adoption of any, there was a motion that was passed, which is, which is there in the minutes, but the discussions that we have have never introduced into the minutes. Thank you, trustee Carabella. There's no additions from your side. Trustee De Rosa, you have your hand up. Do you have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Trustee De Rosa.
Mr. Chair, I will pass.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. So seeing no other hands up, are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes once again? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 4th, 2022, regular board meeting? May I have a mover, please? We have trustee Guzzo looking for a second, please.
I'll second him.
Trustee Ohan Chanada delayed that. Sorry. Seconded by trustee Ohan Chanada. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed, Mr. Chair.
Opposed.
Trustee Boy?
Favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
So?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
So we have four in favor, three opposed. The motion carries. The minutes of the October 4th regular board meeting are approved.
Mr. Chair, point of privilege.
Trustee Carabella.
My point of privilege, I'm going to be leaving the meeting. I find it undemocratic, and my questions are not being answered. And I'm going to leave the meeting. Thank you.
That's not a point of privilege. It's your option to leave the meeting. Thank you, trustee Carabella. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is business arising from previous meetings. Item 7.1, summary of outstanding items from previous meeting is in your package. The chart of outstanding items is provided in your package, trustees. No questions there. So we shall move on to the next order of business, which is action items. Trustee Guzzo has the hand up. So trustee Guzzo, do you have a question on 7.1?
I do, Mr. Chair, and it's the same question I ask every week, so I'm going to ask it again. Can I have an update on the equity audit, please?
I'll pass that question to Director Klein. Director Klein. Can you, Mr. Chairman, update?
Yeah, I was just going to say through you, Mr. Chair, this is an item that senior manager of Human Rights and Equity, Jai Raman and I had spoken about not that long ago, so I'm wondering if you could share that update.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I had a follow-up after our last board meeting with the auditors. And I believe the organization doing the equity audit, and it's my understanding that a draft report will be ready by December.
Mr. Chairman, trustee Guzzo? Thank you. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is action items. Item 8.1 is response to delegations. In according, in accordance with our board bylaws and policy I-06, delegation to the board, we have four options. Trustees may move a motion to make a decision today on this matter, defer the matter to a future meeting, request a staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting, or receive the delegation as information. I will now open up the floor to any trustees who may want to put a motion on the floor on how to proceed with this delegation. I see one hand up. Trustee Guzzo, your hand is up for this.
I believe it is.
Yes, trustee Guzzo, you have the floor. You have four options.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move a motion that we accept the delegation as information.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. We have chosen option four, receive the delegation information. May I have a second?
O'Brien.
Give it to trustee O'Brien. So moved by trustee Guzzo. There's a delay, trustee O'Brien, trustee Murphy. Trustee Guzzo, seconded by trustee O'Brien. Trustee Guzzo, I think we have, you can open up the discussion on receiving information, if required.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I have, her delegation timing is perfect. I have a motion on the table that I think takes in consideration her presentation, so no sense in duplicating or spending more board time on it when we can have a fulsome discussion about it during my, my motion.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustees, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I shall call the vote. Or trustee Guzzo, would you like to close? Seeing none, no other questions. I shall call the vote on accepting the delegation as information. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
De Rosa?
In favor.
Carabella? I think trustee Carabella has left the meeting. Trustee Boy?
Favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
We have six in favor, none opposed, none abstained. The delegation shall be received as information. Shall now move on to, move on to item 8.2, policy I-12, emergency response plan for fire, evacuation, lockdown, hold and secure, shelter in place, and bomb threat. Trustee Guzzo, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy I-12, emergency response plans for fire, evacuation, lockdown, hold and secure, shelter in place, and bomb threat be approved.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. May I have a second for this item?
O'Brien.
Vice Chair Agnew, is there a question on this, trustees? Seeing none, no hands up. I shall call the vote on policy I-12. Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella is not there. Trustee Boy? Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
We have six in favor, none opposed, none abstained, no abstentions. The policy I-12 carries. We shall now move on to item 8.3, policy II-35, access to school premises. Trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy II-35, access to school premises be accepted or be approved.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. May I have a second for this item?
Agnew.
Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. Is there, are there any questions, trustees? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on this item. Trustee Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
We have four in favor, two opposed. The policy II-35 carries. The motion carries. Shall now move on down to policy, item 8.4, policy II-38, educational research. Trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Chair, not Mr. Sheriff. I don't know what made me think of that. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy II-38, educational research be approved.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. May I have a second for this motion?
Agnew?
Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. Trustees, do we have any questions? Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew, trustees, do we have any questions? Saying none, I shall call the vote on item eight point four, policy I dash thirty eight, trustee Owen Chenada?
In favor.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Boy?
Favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
So we have four in favor, two opposed, the motion carries, policy II dash thirty eight carries. Moving on to item eight point five, policy II dash oh three, teacher performance appraisal, trustee Guzzo, can you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy III I dash zero three, teacher performance appraisal be approved.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, may I ask for a second for this item?
Agnew.
Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew, trustees, do we have questions on this policy? Saying none, I shall call the vote on item eight point five, policy II dash oh three, trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Owen Chenada?
In favor.
Four in favor, two opposed, the motion carries, policy II dash oh three, teacher performance appraisal passes. Moving on to the next action item, eight point six, expansion of arts programming at the Halton Catholic District School Board. This is a notice of motion which was presented at the October fourth, twenty twenty two regular board meeting, trustee Guzzo, please read the motion.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize, it's a long intro, so please bear with me. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board's pillars are focused around achieving, believing, belonging. Whereas specialized programming offers opportunities to students who would achieve greater academic success outside of traditional learning environments. Whereas the arts opens a variety of learning opportunities for students of all abilities. Whereas the arts promotes creative expression, invokes feelings, is meditative, doesn't matter the degree of difficulty or beauty. It is a great source of happiness and is known to relieve mental health issues. Whereas the arts gives our students freedom to explore their God given talents and share them with others and allows students to run away and explore as they look, feel and perform and lets them embrace their minds. Whereas the arts promotes self-expression when some students feel alone, even where, when they are surrounded by a room full of people. The arts has the ability to fill up any room. It is something chosen by the student that always supports what they think and believe and is a medium of self-expression. Whereas the arts improves problem solving abilities, the key to creativity is being resourceful and solving problems in different and creative ways. Students can find a myriad of solutions with a creative approach at any age and at every stage of life. Whereas the arts allow students to engage with their community and to connect to like minded people when surrounded with and by their art. Whereas the arts improves self esteem, keeps the brain active and improves, contributes to one's overall well being. Whereas the arts allow students to tell their story, to convey emotion, expression and represents their inner being and thoughts. Whereas the arts has been recognized as an integral part of educational achievement and is an integral to developing students' higher learning skills. A program that incorporates the arts into the curriculum has been proven to increase creativity, improve academic performance, increase motor skills, enhance visual learning and boast higher decision making skills. Whereas we have seen a decline in student enrollment at the elementary level. Whereas the HCSB has multiple schools that have room to accommodate new programs and initiatives that will enrich our students' learning experience. Whereas HCSB strives to be a leader with programs that will only increase student achievement. Be it resolved that the Director of Education directs staff to perform a feasibility report on creating a specialized arts program at both the elementary and secondary levels for implementation within the HCSB in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four or twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. To be completed and presented at the, and I need to change, Mr. Chair, it should say the March first regular board meeting. It's not the first, but the first meeting in March. And be it further resolved that a working committee be struck to work with staff on gathering information on said report.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, may I ask Ms. Swinton to put the resolve, be resolved part on screen and make the change suggested by trustee Guzzo?
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask trustee Guzzo to repeat the change in the date?
Trustee Guzzo?
Absolutely, so it should say March seventh, twenty twenty three, regular board meeting. And then the other addition is just in the second, the last be resolved that a working committee be struck.
Trustee Guzzo, the action item is there, is that accurate? Good, so trustee Guzzo, this motion is in order, may I ask for a second?
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien seconds. So trustee Guzzo, you have five minutes to open up discussion on, on the motion that you presented.
Thank you.
One second, hold on. Okay, go ahead, trustee Guzzo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The arts are about experiencing the joy of creation and learning in ways of expressing thoughts, knowledge and feelings beyond words alone. They teach us how to make judgments in the absence of rule, that human purposes and goals are best held with flexibility and that some activities are self justifying. It helps students to see the world in new ways. The arts stimulate imaginations as well as cognitive and problem solving skills. The arts are for everybody, language, ability, there are no limits. Directing, design, writing, performing, singing, instruments, varied mediums, creating, the possibilities are endless. Think of an art program in elementary that puts together writing a performance, creating, participating and then think of the possibility of having our high school students working in conjunction and directing, mentoring, coordinating and only further building on the community within our HCSB. The ability for all children to have access to a program that they may not otherwise have access to. And lastly, this will attract enrollment to our board. This will help make HCSB lead in programming, drawing students from not only our, within our own board, but from the public and private schools and potentially cross region. There is a reason that steam or stem has now been rebranded as steam. The arts play such an important role in all that our students do and will only help further develop their future and their God given talents. This will take time, but I truly believe that everyone has a place within the arts. And with mental health the way it is these days, what better way than to help our children? I hope that I can count on you trustees to allow staff to perform this feasibility program, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, I shall now open up the floor to trustees for discussion and debate. Just have three minutes to debate or ask questions, whatever they like. So we have speakers list here, we have trustee O'Brien, trustee O'Brien, your hand up, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to first of all applaud my trustee across the table for bringing this forward. After having taught in the arts myself for most of my life, I can vouch that, yes, this is a great motion. Some students, as many you know, the arts is the only thing they ever excel in. And I think this is timely and necessary. And I also applaud the eloquence of her wherethes, I think that should be posted on the door of every school. So I embrace this and I hope all other trustees on the table embrace this motion as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Chua, you're up next, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to trustee Guzzo, first of all, I would like to say thank you for putting this motion forward. The past week, we did put out a poll for our student senators and over, and over seventy, seventy two percent of our senators who did vote, voted in favor for this motion to proceed. Many of our senators, not only art students, but students who are part of mathematics or fields that aren't art, still do see the benefit of this being rather unelected that they want to do or just other students. Our students, our students and our student senators see the benefit of it, which is why all three of us will be voting in favor for your motion. Thank you so much for putting this forward.
Thank you, trustee Chua, up next, we have trustee Owen Chenada, trustee Owen Chenada, you're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Guzzo. So trustee Guzzo, I just have, I have two questions, my first question would be, yes, supporting the arts, increasing the arts, so I'm just wondering, was there something or a roadblock that maybe you thought that we couldn't increase the arts in all the schools rather than having specialized in an elementary and a secondary?
Trustee Guzzo?
I thank you through you, Mr. Chair, thank you, thank you, trustee Owen Chenada for the question. I see a challenge everywhere, I think, you know, getting teachers that are specialized in the arts and spread across forty four schools is not necessarily feasible. This is, this is a program that incorporates arts through everything. That's the whole point of it being a specialized program, very similar to French immersion, right? French immersion is, is throughout all subjects, the arts would then be incorporated through all subjects. And to do that in every school would require, you know, a change to, I believe, the curriculum, the way it's laid out as well, so. That's why to ask for feasibility study, I think that's why it's important to start this way.
Thank you, trustee Owen Chenada, you have a follow up?
I do have a follow up question in regards to the working committee, so in the last be it further resolved, the working committee, so how do you foresee the working committee being created? Who would be on that working committee in your perfect scenario for this be it result, for the result?
Trustee Guzzo, I'll pass it to Director Klein after that, so.
Sure, so I think she asked in my perfect world, what I think it would look like? I was actually gonna say, I believe it's up to the director who actually decides that. But usually when it comes to expanding of programs, just like with French immersion, I believe there were some stakeholders that actually sit on those committees. And hopefully it would be representative of all the region, not regions, but all the municipalities. Because I think everybody has a stake in this, right? I think every area, well, not, I can't say in every area, I think Oakville and Burlington have some schools that are facing a decline in enrollment in elementary, I can't say that for, for Milton, so I won't say it for Milton. But we do have some schools that, you know, are fifty percent capacity. And what are we doing to, to change that? We're not seeing an increase and the projected numbers don't show us increasing, they actually show us either maintaining the decline or continuing to decline. So what can we do to change that? And it needs to start at elementary, not at secondary, because currently, the way it is in elementary, we know you have to have a parent who is, who is baptized for that child to be enrolled in elementary schools, so we know we're not going to attract more of it, more students from that perspective. High school is a little bit of a different story because we know that we can accept all students, regardless of their backgrounds. So I think that, that really is, in a perfect world, that's how I would approach it. But it'll depend on client and whoever decides to put, have, we, I know we have some amazing superintendents that would champion something like this, you know, who have, who have arts as their background, so I think, I think it's a win win, like I just, I see it, the arts are something that everybody can celebrate together. So, and creates that commonality that wouldn't necessarily exist, just like, you know, trustee Chua just said, right? Like, it didn't matter what students had responded to it, whether they were arts focused or math focused, they all agreed that there's a benefit to it, so.
Thank you, I'm going to pass this now to Director Klein, same question?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, trustee Guzzo, yeah, I don't have the perfect answer now. I would say that it'd be difficult to find someone who's as passionate about something like this too, as I think the trustees here before me, and I would share that. I do think that the arts are things that not only help engage students, they engage our, our teachers as well. It offers them an opportunity to be even more creative than they might find in other contexts. I do think that it provides the opportunity for students to again express themselves, for those who might find that the pathways that they're in in schools might not be necessarily the ones for them, that this might again engage them and, and and we see through the arts too, in our faith that this is another opportunity to transcend the world that we live in. So I am a big believer in this and I'm also a big believer in staff that we have here at Hallton Catholic District School Board, that the arts are, are areas that are passionately followed and addressed in context within all the grades from, from the program in kindergarten all the way up. I think I'd look with great excitement with this committee, what it could do. I'm beginning in my own head, beginning to think, who would be, we do want balance, we do want to ensure that we have a blue ribbon committee to a certain extent, that people have expertise in certain areas. Mr. Chair, the trustees have made clear too, this is addressing not only that, that idea of curricular areas that might deserve a little more shine on them and focus, but also the concern regarding enrollment and that issue as well. And so we want to ensure that we try and prioritize those and tease out each of those areas as well, so I'm looking forward to this.
Thank you, trustee Owen Chenada, do you have a follow up question?
No, thank you, wonderful answers by both trustee Guzzo and Director Klein, thank you.
Thank you, on the speakers list, we have trustee De Rosa, Vice Chair Agnew and trustee Murphy. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. My God, how can one say no to a feasibility study, first of all, and one that, one that aims to reach these objectives? But the question that come to mind, to my mind, is it, how does this fit into the curriculum requirements that we currently have right now? I'd need to understand that a little bit and I hope somebody can, can explain it. And with respect to all of the arts courses that go on currently, I'm thinking of music, I'm thinking of art, I'm thinking of other curriculum courses that may be going on. Are we undertaking a repackaging exercise for something that's already there? So my, I have a lot of questions in my, in my mind, not because I'm against the objective of expanding the arts programs, but I have to think that, first of all, we, we're not reinventing the curriculum, I don't think we are. Because if we are, then it's not within our jurisdiction to do that. And secondly, the way this motion seems that there's nothing in place right now, and how's that, how's that working? So I'm, I'm hoping I can get some clarity on that. But I am tending to supporting it because, how can one say no to a feasibility study that deals with any topic really? Okay, thank you.
Trustee De Rosa, I see Superintendent Caroll has his hands up, hand up, so Superintendent Caroll?
Sure, good evening and through you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna say right up front, I'm the least qualified to talk about an arts program specifically. But in terms of the type of programming we'd look to do, you'd be looking to extend and enhance the curriculum that's already in place. So we do have, you know, an arts curriculum that does cover drama, music and visual arts, that's, that's being offered in our elementary schools as well as those specific subjects and sectors. So you'd be looking to provide additional training, you'd be looking to attract more experts to the teaching ranks, you'd be looking to offer maybe different extracurricular opportunities, field trips, bringing in guest speakers. If you're given any school with a specific mandate, you'd look to sort of take the curriculum that's there and look to see what extensions you could do based on the students and the parents and their specific interests. I hope that answers your question, trustee De Rosa.
Superintendent Caroll?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Vice Chair Agnew. You're the floor.
I thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple of comments. So thank you to trustee Guzzo for bringing this forward. I, I'm a huge supporter of finding additional programs and extra opportunities for all of our learners. And we know that children learn in a different way. Different things motivate them, different things inspire them. They show us what they are able to do through different mechanisms. And I think that this is an excellent way to tap into some of those learners who, you know, may not shine in some of those more traditional programs. I think it's a wonderful initiative to take a look at, and I would look forward to seeing that study. The, that I would say for consideration, strong consideration with respect to that committee would be obviously including CAC and CPIC. Committee is addition to perhaps some additional staff from our spec ed. Recognizing that again, who learn in different ways, and we may have, need to have certain supports in place in order for them to be. So I definitely think that we would need that expertise there. And as well as, like I said, having CAC and CPIC, that would be the only thing that I would put forward as far as considerations for the committee. So thank you for bringing this forward, trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Up next is trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I echo the sentiments of my fellow trustees. We all know the value of, of arts in, in their purest sense, in the value of art and beauty itself, but also in, in the marrying of technology and art. So we know that when, when people study art and music, their math skills improve. And if you look at my world, the need for, for architecture and designs and getting away from these rectangular ugly boxes we see everywhere and, and bringing more creativity and beauty into the world as a benefit to our society. So I, I think it's great. And, you know, we want to look for unique selling features of our board. What, what are we known for? What can we be known for? And this is, is one avenue which I think will be, will benefit us long-term. Now, not to be Debbie Downer, there's, there's a problem I see with the, the motion, and maybe parliamentary capor can help us. So, so as you know, being the chair of the bylaw committee, I'm a little sensitive to certain, certain things, or maybe hyper-aware of. So the working committee, in my belief, we cannot direct the director when there's something in his sole discretion to create. So, so the last line, be it for the resolve, that a working committee be struck, I think it's problematic from our bylaw standpoint. I, I know from the director's comments that, that he's more than agreeable and, and sees the value and wants to do it. But I think we have a problem putting it forward as part of the resolution. So I would ask for, for parliamentary capor, if, if you could ask him on our behalf, Mr. Chair, to, to give us some guidance on that.
Yes. Thank you, trustee Murphy. Parliamentary capor, are you there?
Yes, Chair. Hello, Chair. Good evening.
So we have an inquiry, seconded for the result.
Yes, I apologize, Chair. I cannot turn my camera on. My computer won't do that tonight. Trustee Murphy is correct that bylaw two twenty-nine refers to working staff committees and is explicit that those are, it means a committee established at the discretion of the director, which may from time to time require the participation of trustees. I guess, so to be completely correct, it would be better if the second resolved was to say that that the director be requested or recommended to establish a working staff committee.
Thank you, Parliamentary capor. So right now, this motion is moved and seconded, trustee Murphy. It will have to be amended or friendly amendment?
Why don't we try a friend, a friendly amendment?
Let's check with trustees if we can obtain an unanimous agreement. So the changes are being done on the screen as we see there. Okay, so trustees, if you see your screen, the friendly amendment is being proposed. Do you have any concerns with adding this to the motion which is moved and seconded? The director be requested to.
Mr. Chair, I don't understand. Are you looking for unanimity on this?
Yes, because advice that it's better to have this wording in the motion, because it seems to be problematic without that. So do you have any concern with the wording being inserted?
I'd prefer the motion be left the way it is.
So we do not have unanimous, trustee Murphy?
I would like to move an amendment that we add the words, the director be requested to implement in front of a working committee.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, hold on. Let me go and write down something. Amendment one. So we have trustees, since we do not have unanimous consent on the motion, we have, the motion is being amended put by trustee Murphy and seconded by trustee Guzzo. Correct? Okay, so moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Guzzo, and the wording, words in the blue that you see on your screen highlighted in blue, those are the words inserted into the motion. So this is the first amendment. Trustee Murphy, you get to open discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As parliamentary capor has expressed, that without this amendment, the last be it resolved is not in compliance with two point two nine is an, and is against our bylaws. And trustees should not knowingly move resolutions that do not conform to our bylaws, policies, and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustees, do we have any questions? I have a speakers list here. I have trustee De Rosa and trustee Bowie up there. Would you like to speak to this amendment, or was it for the original? Original. So trustees, do we have any other questions regarding the amendment? So seeing none, I should, trustee Murphy, you get to close.
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I shall now call the vote on the amendment, as you see on the screen. The motion with the highlighted section, the director be requested to implement. Trustee Guzzo, how do you vote?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
The Bowie?
Favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanata?
In favor.
We have five in favor, one opposed. The amendment carries. We shall now go back to the main motion. We had a speakers list for the main motion. We have trustee Bowie. Your hand is up. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, I just wanted to say really quickly, after, I, I, maybe it's more of a question. On working committees for programs like this that would be created at the discretion of the director or through the motion, would there be any student representation or involvement from these types of cases?
I'll pass this question to Director Klein.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would want to look again at the, the protocols and procedures that are in place in terms of that. It sounds like what we heard from the parliamentarian is that the director has discretion to, I heard, staff within that. So I want to make sure that we're gathering staff. I would certainly want to make sure that student voice was part of this. So whether or not students are on the committee, which sometimes meets at irregular hours, I'm not sure. But certainly, student voice, I think, is an important component of this. I think we heard that clearly from trustees, and I think it would be invaluable to ensure that we address that.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Do you have a follow-up?
I'd just like to say, if you ever need any contacts or any referrals, let us know.
Thank you. Seeing no other trustees hand up, I shall now call the, close. We shall now close the discussion on the main motion. And the motion was moved by trustee Guzzo, segmented by trustee O'Brien. Trustee Guzzo, you get to close, I believe.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I didn't include in my opening, and I'm going to keep it short, because I've already said a lot, was the amazing teachers that we have that come from the arts and what it will do for them. And it'll also put them in a situation where they get to do what they love, in a setting that they love, and that will flow through to our students in our community. And I think that it will help us attract even more wonderful teachers than we already have. And those that, that excel, you know, I, I, it's a shameless plug, but, you know, STA has rock band. And if you heard them at the beginning of the year, just in a jam session, and, you know, for those of you who have Instagram, take a look. The talent that not only comes from the students so naturally, but from the teachers, and the fact that they love to share it, and they go above and beyond, will just create that much more of a wonderful environment and encouraging learning in such a, such a nurturing environment. So thank you for everybody's consideration, and I hope it's, it's something that we can look at.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. I shall now call the vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa? Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanata?
In favor.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
We have six in favor, unopposed, extensions, motion carries. Moving on to the next action item, which is student achievement, learning gaps. Trust, this, this notice of motion was presented at the October fourth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting. Trustee Ohan Chanata, please read the motion.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. This is a hard act to follow. Mine is not as eloquent as the first motion, but I'm going to start. Mine's is more sweet and short to the point. Whereas one of our main foundations and focus within the Hallton Catholic District School Board multi-year strategic plan is achieving. And whereas the ability to close, reduce learning gaps within our school community is of paramount importance and urgency, be resolved that the Director of Education utilize the appropriate staff to produce a report back to the Board of Trustees on Tuesday, December the sixth, twenty twenty-two. Said reports should be, should include, but not limited to, a current state assessment of learning gaps by subject. It should also include an itemized action plan with target dates to reduce and or close the gaps during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year and summer, if applicable.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanata. The motion is in order, and I shall now ask for a secondar. May I have a secondar for this motion?
Murphy?
Yeah, the motion moved by trustee Ohan Chanata, seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee Ohan Chanata, you have five minutes to open up discussion on your motion.
And thank you. I offered up for everyone's consideration. This is really a motion meant to work collaboratively with our superintendents, our student trustees, our director. I think we've come to a point where we've gone through some very special years, different types of learning, different types of activities that have been canceled and created again. And, and this is really just to represent and have the Hallton Catholic District School Board show us and all of our stakeholders, what do our gaps look like, and, and what action items are we utilizing to start closing those gaps? I'm sure that our school board is already working feverishly to start closing the gaps. It's just to summarize and present to us current state and what future state's going to look like, so that we, we all can feel confident that our children in the school system are getting the attention they deserve and closing any gaps that may be present. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanata. We have a speakers lined up. We have, it's on speakers list. We have Vice Chair Agnew, trustee Chua, and trustee Guzzo. Trustees have to debate or ask questions. Vice Chair Agnew, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have no debate, trustee Erzurnata. And thank you for bringing this forward. I do have a couple of questions, and I don't know that you can answer them or somebody on senior leadership can answer them. But, you know, when I look at this, I think about many different factors that could go into trying to determine what that sort of stirred, current state of assessment would look like. There, I just, I'm, I'm thinking about the magnitude of how many subjects we have, how many students we have, looking at things like IEPs, differentiated learner, those sorts of things, and, and trying to figure out how that could be captured. And if I think about things like, so if I, if I look at something like identifying a learning gap, let's say. So if we take a look, and this is just an example, if we take a look at, you know, maybe we have a cohort of children in grade five who are not doing well with math this year, or they did well last year, but maybe it's just the concepts in math this year are much harder to grasp. And that's just a small example. But I think about that sort of magnified. And I, and I wonder how staff would go about trying to determine all of those nuances and gathering this information. And I know that that's not, you know, that's operational. I know that that's sort of not the, but that's the first thing I think about is learners and a lot of information and a lot of subjects. You know, is that feasible? Is, is, is that the best way to do it? Or is there maybe another way that we could identify what it is that we're trying to look at and how we can reduce that? I don't know. I don't know the answer. I just think, oh, my gosh, that's a big project. So that's just comments on it. I completely appreciate where you're coming from. And I'm grateful that, you know, you're bringing this forward, because I do hear from parents quite often, they're, you know, they are concerned about learning gaps. So thank you. I just don't know the bigger part of it.
Ohan Chanata, do you want some help from senior staff?
Oh, I always want help. So, you know, thank you, trustee Agnew, for that question. And absolutely, I am not the expert in education, and I would, I would completely divert this question to, through Director Klein, maybe over to Superintendent Kroll for their response on this motion in any ways that maybe we could improve to get the data that we're looking for.
Certainly. And through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, trustees. Trustee Agnew, point well taken. I, I think we've already started thinking about, as a curriculum department, and I know with program services, we already started looking at this motion and trying to think about what information we can bring. One thing that I might sort of suggest that the current state of learning gaps by subject, just by virtue of the number of subjects that there are in secondary schools, we may want to just think about narrowing the focus a little bit more. In elementary, it might look more like focused specifically on literacy and numeracy, but we'll have lots of that type of data that we can bring and talk about the strategies that we're using to support any gaps that need to be identified. And then in secondary, we've already talked about the November twenty-fourth PA Day that we have coming up as an opportunity to work with staff by department, to identify what they're seeing as trends within their own classes and strategies they can implement. So, you know, a tech teacher, tech department might see certain skills that are lacking, history, geography might see different skills that are lacking. I think those are things that we've been reasonably do. But trustee Agnew, we certainly would also want to bring, you know, student success and our, and our wonderful spec ed department as well to be able to, to add to the report.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. I'm open to friendly amendments if we feel as a group, and if we want to speak to some other people, like our student trustees, and how they feel, if we can maybe put maybe a broader header rather than specific subject. I kind of went more specific until we couldn't do specifics. That was kind of my intention of this motion. What is realistic and what will give us value-added information?
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanata? Can you hear me, trustee Ohan Chanata?
I can now. You're kind of cutting in and out, but it may be a delay.
Okay. Vice Chair Agnew, you asked the question, you threw it out there. Are you satisfied? It's a big.
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, as long Yeah, I I think so. I mean, as long as, you know, as as long as, really, I mean, the report is for staff to put together. So as long as as our staff feels that this is something that they can do based on what's being asked here. You know, again, I'm okay with that. I'm not going to tell staff how to do it. I just, again, I was really just looking at the magnitude of that information and I just didn't know if there was a different way of, you know, instead of eating that whole elephant, could we break it down in chunks? But again, if if staff thinks that there needs to be some changes to the wording here to to better meet that, great. If not, that was the only thing that I had to say about it. So I I'm good if if staff is good.
Director Klein? Any queries to the motion?
I don't have any, through you, Mr. Chair, I don't have any queries on this. I think I I got most of which of what Superintendent Kroll was saying. I think the the request for this is is valuable and should be applauded. I think to improve, you have to know where gaps are. Like was said earlier, this is succinct, but there is a lot within it. And I think there's a lot, so much that we need to try and focus on a few of the main things. The few, the main things traditionally, and and this is making them seem less than how important they are, are literacy and numeracy. And so I think these, this is sort of the, these are the the important cores of what our children learn from kindergarten through their their time into adulthood. And so I think those could be ones that we focus on. I think I heard Superintendent Kroll talk about department heads within high schools could focus on subject, certain subject areas to to clarify gaps within those. And I think with the timeline of December 6th, I think that would be, these would be achievable. Say, what are the, what are the general gaps? I think it was already said too by the trustees that, you know, the further back we go in terms of looking for assessment data, the more general these have to be. So I think if we do that, we could readily give a sense of what the patterns are for gaps, give a sense of what we want to do to address those. Because you're right, we have emerged from two and a half years of COVID and there are concerns around how students are doing. So if we can focus on literacy and numeracy and some of the areas that our high schools could gauge as areas they could focus on, I think these are, these are.
Thank you, Director Klein. So trustee Ohan Chanara, let's go down the list of speakers and see if what suggestions come up, what ideas come up and we'll come back.
Perfect.
Trustee Chua, you're up next. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to trustee Ohan Chanara. Like trustee Guzzo's motion, we also did put out a poll for our student senators to see their opinions on it. And I'm glad to say over 96% of our voting senators voted for this motion. A lot of our senators feel as though that especially with COVID throwing everything off the past two, three years, there have been education gaps, especially for those students who were once successful, now falling behind a little bit. And even for those students who are still successful, they still have concern for, you know, their peers or their classmates who might have some learning gaps. So we all feel as though that this motion will help do that. Personally, I love how this is before exams because if this is reported by December, we can make a plan before exam season to help our students succeed with those. And yeah, thank you so much. We will all be voting in favor for this motion.
Thank you, trustee Chua, for presenting student input. Up on the speakers list, we have trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and similar to trustee Agnew's comments, I just question regards to how that will be collected. And I know that, you know, with EQAO, it's very one dimensional. I'm I'm just trying to understand how the expectation, like how that will happen. And is this enough time for staff to be able to come back to make those assessments, right? December 3rd seems like a really quick turnaround in the sense of allowing that opportunity because, again, because it's not one dimensional. You know, you, not every learner learns the same way and and you're able to 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 do one assessment. And it will be able to dictate where the gaps are. And especially in high school, right? We've got students who who are finally back to a normal semester. Teachers that don't necessarily know them are just starting to learn, getting within their IEPs. I just want to make sure that that that, like, is that possible? Because I want to make sure, like, I think it's great. I just want to make sure that the report comes back and it's actually representative of the way, I guess, similar to what trustee Agnew said, which is, you know, is it representative of how our students learn and where they truly are?
I'll pass this to Director Klein.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I absolutely see reason in what you're saying. I think when we look at December the 6th, I think was the date that we had written down here. We always remember December 6th means things are wrapped up, not December 6th. We're going back to now November 30th, right, a week before, and then in terms of getting the data. So I I take your point and I value that and I'm grateful for that. I think we could have more runway to, A, get the data and B, discern what the data is telling us and then C, begin to clarify what the what the strategies are in place or will be in place. So I I I think to move it forward would be, forward meaning later, would be would be gratefully accepted. And I think would allow us to have a more fulsome gathering of data and reflecting on that.
So Director Klein, can I ask you what your suggested timeframe? Do you have any suggestions? Staff would have any suggestions?
Sorry, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, though, I don't want to delay it. Like, obviously, this is, this would be of importance. So as as quickly as staff is able to, I just want to make sure that we're able to see. I I don't want to dismiss trustee Ohan Chanara's motion by any means whatsoever. I just want to make sure that it is reflective and allows that opportunity for for more than a one dimensional assessment. But I do think if we're going to do this, that we need to 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 turn our minds to it as quickly as possible. And and it sounds like it's already happening anyways, so.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. So if we were to move into, let's say, that second meeting in January, I think we could have something. And I totally appreciate and I'm grateful what you said earlier, which is we already have teachers gathering data now that would have started right off the bat. So it's a matter of looking for wider wider sips of this and then be able to to use it. So I think that would be more reasonable. Thank you.
Trustee, back to trustee Ohan Chanara. Does that make sense to you in your motion, moving the date to the second meeting in January?
It all makes sense to me. I I guess, I guess I'm looking at it in a different way, that this is a start. You know, and even if someone put a friendly amendment that we would say, okay, what's the gap in elementary as far as literacy and numeracy? What's the gap in secondary as far as department? Then at least we get some data. And I agree with trustee Guzzo, right? We want to make sure it's fulsome and the data is right if we're making decisions on it. But I see this as almost another organic document that may move forward, right? Okay, so we get the the first start of the information. And then if there's something else the trustees at the table want to see, then we can continue to move forward with fulsome discussion with the superintendents and the Director of Education. So, I mean, if the will of the trustees is to postpone it a couple of weeks, I'm not here to stand in the way. I just want us to get a current state the best we can for everybody to see what we're doing to move forward with a bit of a sense of urgency.
So let's, any trustees are, would like to see the report brought back the second week of January, or do you like the date to be the same? Do you need some help?
The, Mr. Chair, I can suggest that we we start workshopping this here and come up with a possible amendment or friendly amendment. So I think that Superintendent Kroll had had mentioned that the department heads are working on identifying trends in secondary by department. So I think that's the tactic we want to see. And then again, it was mentioned that in elementary, the trends for literacy and numeracy are readily available. So I think we need to formulate this motion based on requesting that, specifically that data. And then we can discuss what time it is. So does that make sense to the report would identify current trends, learning gaps, secondary by department, elementary by?
Mr. Chair, my hands up.
Okay. So trustee Murphy, could you repeat the last few sentences?
That would, that would require a recall memory which seems to be fading. So, so what we, what we talked, what we heard from from Superintendent Kroll was that currently department heads are identifying trends in learning gaps in secondary by department. So that information would be available, would be available and of value. And then we also heard that the the two important elements or two of the more important elements in elementary is literacy and numeracy gaps, learning gap trends, which again, through through, you know, current discussions may be more readily available. So let's, my suggestion is we insert that into, that's what the report asks for. So we we strike out and insert, the report will identify current trends in learning gaps, secondary by department, elementary surrounding literacy and numeracy.
Okay, I'm going to need some help from Ms. Swindon. Could you put the motion up on screen and can work on that? So we still have the speakers list? We're just trying to polish up this motion. Trustee Murphy, is that what you're suggesting?
I would even suggest we go to the to the first line and basically, Director of Education utilized appropriate staff to produce a report identifying current trends in learning gaps in secondary by department and elementary centered on literacy and numeracy. And then we can put a date. And then we can, now we can have, if everybody agrees on that point, we can now have the discussion whether that December 6th date is realistic or not. And then we can ask staff what would be a good date. And trustee Ohan Chanara, is that? I don't, you know, we're, I think your request was more of a micro level. This is maybe more of a macro level, but it will start the discussion. And and I think realistically, a certain amount of this data is going to be anecdotal anyway, just because we're in, we're right in the mix of it. Is that going to provide the results you you're looking for?
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and trustee Murphy. Yes, I appreciate the assistance in additional, of these additional lines based upon the past conversations. It does. I mean, current trends, current state assessment, kind of the same thing, really. I just want to see how are we doing in what departments, in what areas, and what are we doing about it, pretty much? That's what I want this report to produce. So this would be approved by me. This is the same trend that I'm looking for, yes.
Initially, we should add, addition to that would be mitigating strategies to close the gaps.
Well, in the bottom, in the bottom, it says it should also include an itemized action plan with target date. So I'd like to see, okay, these are the trends of the gaps and this is our action plan moving forward to to continue to close those gaps.
Okay, so let's look to see how that reads. Now, Director of Education utilized the appropriate staff to produce a report identifying current trends in learning gaps in secondary by department and in elementary by literacy and numeracy. And then we would put in, insert a date. It should also include an itemized action plan with target dates to reduce or close the gaps during the 2022-2023 school year and summer. Yeah, I think that reads correct. Does that make sense to everybody else?
Yes.
Do we need to move an amendment for that or is this friendly?
Trustee Murphy, I'll go around and see.
Oh, actually, let's just verify the date before we do that and then we can do it all at once. So through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. Given the the current scope we're looking for, is that date of December 6th reasonable? Or would you still need it pushed? Pushed forward, I think, is your verbiage that you used.
Director Klein?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think I think it is, I think it is reasonable. Sorry, did you say for the December 6th or the one that?
Yes, December 6th, yeah.
I I think for a a 30,000 foot sense of what the gaps are in those areas, I don't think that's unreasonable. I think for the area where we were looking at, I'm hearing, looking at it one more time here, looking at spots. I I I am a little concerned that, I think we had, there it is. Itemized action plan, target dates. A little more difficult, but I think we would be able to have a form of action.
Is is the 17th our second beating? Or actually not ours, because some of us won't beat it. Let's put in the 17th and then we can, if that's a friendly amendment, if not, I can move it as an amendment. Does that work for everybody else?
Let's go around it.
Could you, Mr. Chair, could you go around? I think there's other opinions around the table, including mine.
Bring it on the table.
I have my hand up. Somebody took it out.
No, nobody took it out. Nobody took your hand out, trustee De Rosa.
Okay, I'm back up again.
Trustee Murphy, take one more look at the resolved, then I'll go around the table.
I think that would be my suggestion for a friendly amendment. Or let's save some time. I have moved the amendment as illustrated on the screen.
One second, before we do that, let's talk to trustee Ohan Chanara.
Well, they don't have to. It's amendment. I'm moving. It's not a friendly amendment. It's an unfriendly amendment.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the main motion. This is moved by trustee Murphy. I'll ask for a secondor.
I can second.
Seconded by, seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. So trustee Murphy, we have the amendment on the screen. You get to open up the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We just took, worked on this collectively, took suggestion and input from staff. So I think this is, achieves the result and is reasonable. And then it's it's up to trustees to to vote as they will.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee, is, do you have any questions? We have a speakers list, but that's for the main motion. Do we have any speakers to this amendment?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Trustee, trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up first. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to thank my esteemed colleague for bringing this amendment forward. The date, I think it's very wise and I totally agree with that date. And the identifying current trends in learning gaps in secondary by department, I I I think that's absolutely crucial. I mean, COVID has really set some students back in every subject. And I think our secondary teachers need to do that and close that gaps and continue to close that gaps. And this motion supports that. Where I want to challenge the amendment a little bit, and just bear with me, is in the elementary by literacy and numeracy. And I know, like in my entire teaching career, the driving subjects in elementary are literacy and numeracy. And and I get that. It's the culture we live in. If a child can't use numeracy or literacy, they're at huge disadvantage. But being But being a teacher of the arts, sometimes you feel that it's, it's not taken as a subject. It's as, that a learning gap in the arts is, well, it's, it's maybe a learning gap, but it doesn't really count as much as literacy and numeracy. And I guess I'm taking this opportunity to challenge that. So I'm wondering, the original motion I really liked, I just accept the date. And not only in the arts, but I have spoken to elementary phys ed teachers who are now at a point where they're teaching best children in grade eight how to play basketball, whereas pre-COVID, they, they do in grade four and five. So I kind of like the original idea of my esteemed trustee that brought this whole motion forward in the beginning, that all subjects in, from grade one to 12, the learning gaps be closed. I know this is a huge project, and that's been mentioned. But I think it's a project that has to be done, no matter how hard it is. But I do agree with the date. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you're on the speakers list for the amendment. Trustee DeRosa, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to trustee O'Hern Chana for bringing this forward. I, I think what I heard, I, I liked the motion the way it was originally. And I think what I heard our director saying is that at 30,000 feet, the December 6th date was not as unachievable as it appeared. Although I, I would love to give him the opportunity to, to extend that date to his comfort level. But the motion itself, I would support the original one. I'm not in support of this, this, because we've come down from 30,000 feet. And although we've changed, we've changed to January 17th date, we've come down to 5,000 feet. And I don't think that that was the original, the original intent. So I would suggest that we go back to the same, the original, the original motion, give our director a little bit more time. And then, once we, we get through that process, we can say where, we can see more clearly where to take it after that. So I will not support this amendment. Thank you.
Do not see any other speakers for the amendment. Trustee Murphy, you moved. Vice Chair Agnew seconded. Trustee Murphy, you get to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to reiterate, this actually is, is on a more macro level, not a micro level. It's actually looking at a broader scope than a more narrow scope. And we took the advice of staff and, and the director, trying to construct this motion. So if, if you support it, please vote for it. If you don't, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I shall now call the vote on the amendment to the main motion, moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
Oh, opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chana?
I'm in favor.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
So we have four in favor, two opposed. The amendment carries. Shall now move on to the main motion as amended. Trustees, you see the main motion in front of you. This main motion was moved by trustee O'Hern Chana, moved by, seconded by trustee Murphy. We have a speaker on for this main motion, trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to speak as to the original motion. And I, I believe that my comments still stand, just to provide a little bit of student perspective. I think that in looking at learning gaps from an external perspective, from staff, from parents, from all of that, we see very clearly the need for an update on these skills, for, for, to see what our students have missed. But I believe that the issue is a little bit more complex when you look at it from the student perspective. I know that in talking to many of the senators at most of our secondary schools, and I'll speak from the secondary's perspective, the common denominator in all of our discussions in the past couple of weeks has been stress. Students feel as if they've been thrown into the lion's den, so to speak, with little support or recovery from, not necessarily just the pandemic, but from having a different pace and a different style of learning for the past couple of years. Learning gaps are felt by students in a drop in their grades, in expectations they feel that they can't meet, in the soft skills and work habits that they don't have currently because they missed out on those. And so I understand, and I completely share the need for data on literacy, numeracy, and these learning gaps per department. But what I'd also like to just put forward for consideration in the second part of the action plan with the strategies for reduction and closing the gaps, just to ask a little bit of a guiding question. When we look at closing these gaps, does this, would this mean, you know, catching up on what was not taught in the curriculum? Would it include, you know, teaching more content, testing more content, and raising those expectations even further? Or I think what our students are really looking for is a more holistic approach to their success in these learning gaps that they face.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. So back to the motion that was put forth by trustee O'Hern Chana and seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee O'Hern Chana, do you see any additions to the motion?
Thank you, trustee Bowie, for that question, and I, I hear you. And, and I guess I'm gonna deflect it again over to, through Director Klein to Superintendent Kroll, because that is a very large, in my perspective, closing the gap can mean anything. So it can be closing the learning gaps, and then to reduce the stress, to your point. So to me, this is a seed that I want to plant with the help of all of you, so that it grows organically, and then we start, you know, siphoning off to the areas that we think need more attention through superintendents and the admin, and the student trustees, and everybody involved in health and wellness. So to me, this is the seed that needs to be planted, and then we can start moving in directions where we think we need to move to help our students and our staff.
So I shall now forward it to Director Klein. Give your suggestions. Director Klein?
Through you, Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair, I wouldn't, but I guess I'm wondering from trustee O'Hern Chana's perspective, what, what exactly are you looking for in terms of more feedback on this?
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. So usually, you know, if we have a current state and we want to get to a future state, there's usually an action plan in between to get us from Plan A to Plan B. That's what I'm looking for. I'm not baking the cake, so to speak. I, I need the experts to come back to us and say, okay, these are the gaps, these are the trends, and these are the things we're suggesting or that we are actually doing to help close the gap. So to trustee Bowie's point, if, if it's, if it's going to induce more stress, that's another conversation we have to have. But we need something to start with, and that for our parents and our stakeholders, so they know what we're doing, you know, and how we're trying to help the children moving forward. That's all I'm looking for.
Director Klein, would you like trustee Bowie to restate her? What she was looking for? Would you like to restate what your, your ask?
Yeah, so, so I was just wondering what sort of the approach to learning gaps in specific would be. Are we specifically just looking at content that students do not have the capability to answer? Or are we looking at, you know, those soft skills, things like work habits, things like? I, I mean, just as an example, I had this conversation today in my indigenous issues class. My teacher was absolutely shocked that none of us had written a senior level research paper and all in grade 12, and going into social science programs next year. And she was shocked that we hadn't done it yet. So those types of skills where we can't necessarily see those in the content that students don't know, but those are the skills that they're gonna need moving forward.
Director Klein?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The first thing we need to do is to get the data and get the information to know, to know what we are dealing with. And then the second step would be to rely on our, on our staff and our research department and our professionalism to, to gauge and to prioritize strategies, including strategies that go beyond just the, the pedagogy regarding certain subject areas, literacy, numeracy, et cetera, to, to itemize those and then prioritize those and support those, whatever they may be, to, to address those gaps. So I can't really specifically, and I think you're probably aware of that, identify ones right now, because we want to start and see what the gaps are and how severe they are, and then prioritize those gaps as well. But I take your point that teaching and learning is more than, more than pedagogy in terms of instructional practice, in terms of, it goes beyond it in terms of, like you said, work habits and learning skills and the, and the support for students beyond that as well.
Trustee Bowie, I think what trustee Murphy said is more on the macro level. So I think your ask, I think it's more of a micro level, which could be the next step of this motion when it comes back. Okay, so you're okay with this? Thank you, trustee Bowie. I do not see, oh, trustee Kuzo, your hand is up. Trustee Kuzo, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And just to trustee Bowie's point, I think one, maybe, and I think the approach would, would be great to see, you know, I know the mental health piece has been a big thing this year. It's been, you know, I think we've recognized, we were well aware of the need for, for an increase in supports. And, and I would assume, and I don't want to assume, so I'm just gonna ask, because maybe this will, will help with, with trustee Bowie, what she was asking is, is that this report won't be done in a vacuum, right? That it will be done collaboratively with that mental health piece, with the COICs and the social workers, because they will have a different perspective on that as well. If there's things that are impacting and impacting learning, and, you know, to your point, one of the things you said, and I never thought of it, is everything's kind of resumed back to normal. Everybody has to relearn how to time manage. Like, nothing's online anymore. You know, kids are in schools, in fact, to full-time sports, not just in school, but extracurriculars, tutoring, a lot of them are in person. So it's, it's a lot different. For two years, everybody was managing virtually, right? So, you know, you had to go to the washroom or grab something to eat, you could do that. Now you actually have to get, re, retrain yourself to, to plan your days accordingly, right? And as adults, we have a hard time doing that. So in the expectations on our kids, you know, I think sometimes we, we forget that we still have to, to look at that piece and remember that they are still kids, students. I don't need to, by all means, right? You're still, you're still young, you're still babies, right? No, I know you're not. Don't make me cry. So I think, I think, you know, I'm assuming that that would be part of it, part of that whole approach, not to micromanage it as, as trustee Murphy says, more of a macro. And, and I'm assuming that would be a big part of it as well.
Thank you, trustee Kuzo. Trustee Murphy, your hand is up, you're the floor. Oh, you wanted an answer? I thought you made a comment. Director Klein?
I hope I'm responding, I hope I understood correctly. But the assumption was, which was really a question, I think you're saying, was that, and it would, I would share that assumption. So I would share the assumption that, and the assumption is based on a premise that we have educating staff and principals and consultants and leaders in this board that are second to none, that they are highly trained, that they are highly professional, that they work collaboratively, that they have a strong sense that what they're doing is not siloed, that the work in terms of a subject discipline is important in, in terms of all the other subject disciplines, and in terms of things like mental health and well-being. So my assumption would be that that, those would be addressed, and that those would be things that would be taken into consideration. I think there's a wide array of strategies and a wide array of starting points. And I think it would be up to us then to really prioritize and, and decide which ones would be the most important. And I think also to allow staff to have a menu of choices when they, when they, when they come to addressing this. Because despite the fact that it is, whatever I said, 30,000 feet up, or how many meters up, there's still, when you get down to it, they are still individual learners. And so it's important that we address them individually.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Bowie, you want to respond to that?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to respond to that in saying that in my comment, I have no doubt that our teachers and our staff are working to address these issues, and they're working holistically. I just don't want us, in our haste to address learning gaps and get them closed as soon as possible, I don't want us to neglect a gradual return from such a different lifestyle that we have. And just take into account that, yes, we want to close learning gaps as much as possible. We want to have these strategies, but we don't want to brush it and causing our students to be constant.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Shall move down the speakers list. We have trustee Murphy next. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to trustee Bowie's point, I think, I think we have to be realistic when we're talking about closing the gaps to, to having, you know, students have gone through an experience, and in many cases, it's a traumatic experience. And to have the expectation that you can close the gap in a school year is not realistic. And, and as a society, we have to accept the fact that it will take many, many years to mitigate those differences. I think, you know, 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, people will be saying, oh, yeah, you know, COVID kid, right? It definitely has and will have an impact. You can't go through an experience like that and, and expect it to be wiped from your memory. So I think we have to be realistic and have, have realistic expectations when we're trying to close these gaps, or, or really, you know, I would almost use a different term is, is to mitigate the impact of having gone through that experience is really what we're trying to do. While, while you're, you know, time didn't stop, you're moved on to new subjects. So it, it is going to be quite challenging. And I think, you know, we always hear and use the term, meet students where they are. And I think that's really part of the approach that we have to take is, is it has to be more individualistic and has to be realistic and has to be over a longer period of time. We all, we want to close the gaps as, as quick as we can, but I don't know how realistic is. I'm sure that will come out in, in our discussions with our staff. I know I had a conversation with Superintendent Kroll, and, and I think he mentioned, and may correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Kroll, was, you know, early, the first few weeks of school was really to meet the students where they were, not to be as focused on curriculum and, and sticking to that, but really getting a feel so that, that the teachers can understand where each student is and, and get a feel for that. And I think that's the holistic approach that we have to have going through, even though it is quite challenging, obviously, for 37,000 students. But, but we have to be realistic that, that it will take time and have impact, and everybody will advance at a different pace.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Up next is trustee DeRosa. Trustee, trustee DeRosa, you're the floor.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think to the point that every student will be at a different level. Every student, every student's gap will be, be different. I think the overwhelming message for us is to, is for patience, adaptation on an individual basis. And who knows how that, how long that will take. In the meantime, I think we need, again, we need to give our director the, the time to put some thought to putting a framework in place so that we can start this work. But the expectations, the expectations should consider the fact that everybody, every student will work at his own pace, will catch up at his own pace. And I think the underlying, the underlying critical element in whatever we do in this work and starting this work is is patience and adaptation depending on what situation we have in the front of us on an individual, student by student basis. So again, I like the the original motion. I would like to give staff through the director more time, and I would, I would like to make them comfortable, they can pick that date. And then we should modify the date accordingly and take this to a vote. Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosa, am I hearing you wanted to change some, the date in this?
Well, I, if, first of all, the, I wanted to go back to the original, to the original motion. But, you know, if the director is comfortable with this, and if he's comfortable with the January 17th, then that's what my main concern is, is that this is a, we've got, we've got to make reasonable requests that are achievable from our staff. So I would turn it to to our director to to offer some comments on the on the motion as he reads it. And if he's comfortable with it, I'm prepared to support it, although I prefer to the original one.
Trusty De Rosa, we have gone through this exercise over the past 30 minutes, 45 minutes. And the date has been inserted based on what Director Klein has stated was a comfortable time for him. So I won't open this up again because we had this discussion.
So my apologies, Mr. Mr. Chair, I don't want to reiterate what has already been discussed. I'm making my point where I, where I'm at. If this has been discussed, if the director is comfortable with this, then it will be for him to deliver what he's comfortable with. And I'm prepared to back him up on on whatever he's comfortable with. So there we go, simple.
Thank you for your comments. I do not see any other hands up, so I shall hand the floor to Trusty O'Hanlon to close discussions on the motion as amended. Trusty O'Hanlon.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair, and to my fellow trustees and staff and Director Klein and everybody. What a wonderful discussion. I really appreciate everybody's point of view, and thank you to Trusty O'Brien and De Rosa for wanting the specifics in my original motion, but I truly believe this is the start, a realistic start. And to Trusty Murphy's point, there is the word reduce and or close to keep it in some sort of reality so we can move forward with this. But I, I, I believe that our staff are already moving towards this goal. It's just like I said, a beginning. There'll be the mental health component that we'll add in, there'll be the arts that we'll add in, and physical education as well. So I appreciate all the support and hopefully we'll pass this motion and we can move on to the next topic. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Trusty O'Hanlon. I shall now call the vote on the motion in front of us, which is moved by Trusty O'Hanlon and seconded by Trusty Murphy. Trusty O'Brien?
In favor.
Trusty De Rosa?
In favor.
Trusty Bowie?
In favor.
Trusty Chua?
In favor.
Trusty Kuzma?
In favor.
Trusty O'Hanlon?
In favor.
Guzzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Murphy?
In favor.
We have six in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. The motion as amended carries. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is staff reports. 9.1, process and resource required to develop a board-wide anti-black racism strategy. Director Klein and Ms. Chair Aman, please present the highlights of your report, and we do have we have Legal, we have Arlene Huggins present to help us with this, Director Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, we have a, an update report today that is entitled Process and Resources Required to Develop Board-Wide Anti-Black Racism Strategy. And I would like to welcome two people. One is someone familiar to you, our Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity, Ms. Jaya Raman. And we have, as was noted earlier, Arlene Huggins, who is a counsel with Koski Minsky. And and again, we appreciate her patience, her presence and her expertise. And we are very happy to give you an update, what I know is something of value to trustees and of this board. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jaya Raman.
Good evening and thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to present the staff report. So the purpose of this report is to outline a roadmap, including the process and resources required to develop a board-wide strategy to dismantle anti-black racism and achieve system equity for black students and staff at Halton Catholic. The report lays out the background information, which is the motion that was passed at the June 7, 2022 meeting by the Board of Trustees. Subsequently, Koski Minsky was hired to develop a report to outline what is required to have a robust strategy in place. The report builds on the work that our school board has already engaged in over the past few years. Attached is the Anti-Black Racism Strategic Plan Staff Report labeled as Appendix A. I'd like to draw your attention to the key points outlined in Part Two, that is, scope of work of Appendix A, which will then result or lead to a three-year strategic plan. And the key components outlined in Appendix A are the establishment of a steering committee, soliciting feedback from stakeholders to focus group surveys and our town halls, review and analysis of data and policies, review and alignment of the work of existing committees, researching promising practices, identification of existing resources at Halton Catholic, and drafting of a strategic plan with measurable goals. And finally, the cost for developing said strategy as per the report. The timeframe outlined is from November 2022 to June 2023. A board-wide strategy to dismantle anti-black racism would build on the ongoing work and synthesize stakeholder group feedback to establish a robust strategy to enhance our system efforts to center black students and staff to achieve, believe, and belong. I want to conclude the report by highlighting that the work of addressing anti-black racism requires appropriate time and resources in order to be sustained and comprehensive. The report lays out the process and resources required for the strategy. The staffing expansion of the Human Rights and Equity Office will be instrumental in coordinating the work of the steering committee and the consultants to develop and implement the plan for transformation. The report is shared for consideration by the Board of Trustees as per the board motion. And now, and again, Arlene Huggins, who is the lead on the development of this report from Koski Minsky is with us, and trustees are welcome to address questions to either her or any one of us. Thank you.
You, Ms. Chair Aman, thank you for presenting your report. Trustees, do we have questions? I see a couple of hands up here. Trusty De Rosa, you have your hands, hand up, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm a strong supporter of any, any initiatives to mitigate racism in general, in any environment, and especially in our schools, and especially in our young minds, that we have the responsibility to shape. My question is very simple. What are we doing about the other minorities that do get discriminated against? Help me see through that and what's coming down the pipes, because anti-racism is certainly has been
Pete De Rosa, there is a point of order raised. I'll expect all trustees to be silent. As there is the point of order, Trusty Guzzo, state your point of order, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. This report is speaking specifically to a motion that is very prescriptive. And as as per our policies and procedures, when we hear things that are offensive, we are to disrupt and stop. And I find some of Mr. or Trusty De Rosa's comments offensive, and I would ask that he he stick to the report at hand.
So, Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Trusty De Rosa?
Yes.
When, when there's a point of order, I'll just clarify once again, it's been a long time since I clarified this, so I'll clarify again for your benefit. When there's a point of order raised, all trustees shall be silent. The point of order shall be stated. The chair will rule on the point of order. There's no discussion or debate on that. You can challenge the point of, the ruling of the, of the chair. So, Trusty De Rosa, I'm expecting everybody to to respect that. So, Trusty, Trusty Guzzo has raised the point of order. Trusty Guzzo has specified the code of conduct and and the item disrespectful to treat others fairly regardless of example, race, ancestry, place, origin, color, ethnic origin, citizenship, and all that stuff. Trusty Guzzo, your point of order is well accepted. Trusty De Rosa, I'm ask you, Trusty Guzzo, I'm, Trusty De Rosa, I'm going to ask you.
Mr. Chair, I will oppose that ruling. It's my right to do that, and it
Trusty De Rosa, I have not finished.
Mr. Chair, there are accusations that have been launched that are completely unfounded.
Not have the floor. Trusty De Rosa, you do not have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I do have the floor, and you
Do not have the floor.
Because
Are out of order.
Accused, I have been
You are out of
Ground, and I
Trusty De Rosa, you do not have the floor, you are out of order. Please consider this as warning number one for this evening. Trusty De Rosa, you do not have the floor. I'm ruling on a point of order raised by Trusty Guzzo. Trusty Guzzo has a point of order which is valid. You will stick to the discussion based on the report presented only. Be careful about the words that you use, which could be offensive to to different groups. Trusty De Rosa, you have your hand up, you will continue to speak on your question. But but beware and be careful of the words that you use. Trusty De Rosa, you have the floor.
You need to balance debate, Mr. Chair. In no uncertain
Once again, you have
Valid points without
Yell at the chair. You will not yell. The chair has ruled, okay? You have only the option of appealing the ruling. Should I hear you yelling once again, Trusty De Rosa? I will not hesitate to use the powers entrusted to the chair. So, Trusty De Rosa, I expect proper decorum to be maintained at this board meeting. So
Mr. Chair, I am being muted. I demand my right to be heard.
Trusty De Rosa, you do not have the floor. In the beginning of the meeting, if you were paying attention, you would have heard
Chair, I demand my right to be heard.
Trusty De Rosa, once again, I have muted you, and I will state that I have muted you. Because I did state in the beginning of the meeting, when you do not have the floor, you shall be muted. So I, I, I was ruling on a point of order. I expect all trustees to be silent till the point of order is ruled on. I ruled on the point of order. You have only one option, two options, to accept it or to appeal the ruling. I did not hear either of them. So, Trusty De Rosa
I do not accept it. I am continuously being muted by someone.
Trusty De Rosa, I am stating for the record that you do not have the floor.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'm purposely muted, Mr.
You're right. Trusty De Rosa, I'm stating for the record that you are interrupting when the chair is speaking.
No, Mr. Chair, for no record, my constituents have a right to be heard.
You are out of order. You have
Mr. Chair, you owe me the opportunity
You are muted by me.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Trusty De Rosa, if I hear you yelling once again, you will get a
I am not yelling, Mr. Chair. I respectfully appeal your ruling. Secondly, I expect to be heard, Mr. Chair, because I am wrongfully accused. I am being wrongfully
Trusty
Of being offensive. So that is a wrongful accusation.
Once again, Trusty
You, Mr. Chair, as the chair, as an impartial
Trusty De Rosa, you have appealed my ruling. Do I have a second? Trusty De Rosa, you have appealed my ruling. Do you have a second?
The question is for the assembly, Mr. Chair.
So you have appealed my ruling. Brian, do you second?
Yes.
So, Trusty De Rosa, you have appealed my ruling on the point of order which I raised and the ruling that I gave, Trusty Guzzo. So you have a, I'll take this to a recorded vote, there's no debate. So it is moved by Trusty De Rosa, seconded by Trusty O'Brien. Trusty O'Hanlon, how do you vote? Are you in favor of the appeal or are you opposed to the appeal?
Opposed.
Guzzo?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
Trusty Murphy?
Opposed.
Trusty O'Brien?
In favor.
De Rosa?
In favor.
Trusty Bowie? Trusty Chua? Trusty Kuzma?
Opposed.
So there's two in favor, four opposed, the appeal fails.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to raise a point of privilege. I would like
You will not speak, Trusty De Rosa. You do not have the floor.
Mr. Chair, nobody's told me ever to not
Trusty De Rosa, please consider this as your second warning.
Point of order. Mr. Chair, point of order.
De Rosa.
Mr. Chair, no one has ever
You're out of, disrupting the meeting.
Certainly not you, Mr. Chair.
Trusty De Rosa?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Point of order, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, point of order.
Trusty O'Brien, please state your point of order.
Point of order is that a point of privilege does not need to be recognized.
Okay, Trusty O'Brien, is this a point of order or a point of privilege?
A point of privilege does not have to be recognized. You can get a, could we get a parliamentarian opinion on that, please?
What, what is it regarding Trusty O'Brien? I'm not clear on your point of privilege.
Well, my point of order is that a point of privilege does not have to be recognized. You can, you can say it anytime you want. You don't need to be recognized.
O'Brien, can you state me, state whether it's a point of order or a point of privilege?
My point of order is that a point of privilege does not have to be recognized by the chair. I mean, saying it. You don't have to have your hand raised.
So can, okay, if you're saying it's a point of order, trustees, 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 I need to focus on this. So, Trusty O'Brien, I'm confused. You're raising a point of order and a point of privilege.
No, no. No, I'm raising a point of order.
Trusty O'Brien, I'm trying to understand.
I understand, Mr. Chair, Dwight, but my point of order is a point of privilege does not have to be recognized by the chair.
I'm totally confused on this. I shall call the parliamentarian because Derek Kapor, did you understand the point of order?
I believe I do, Chair. I believe Trusty O'Brien is making, is stating that recognition is not required to make a point of privilege, that a member can interrupt the proceedings to raise the point of privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what's your, your your, your point of order is accepted, Trusty O'Brien?
Thank you. So I, I think we should let Ms. Chair, well, De Rosa make his point of privilege.
I did not hear him say point of privilege. I just heard him yelling at the top of his voice through and through.
No, I said point of privilege. You can tell the story the way you want, but I am telling you, Mr. Chair, I'm being respectful, and I raised a point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
I am speaking with Trusty O'Brien right now. You shall be given an opportunity to speak, Trusty De Rosa. And remember, we have two warnings. Try it one more time, Trusty De Rosa, and I'll have to make some decisions, okay?
Yeah, you go ahead and do make the decisions you want, Mr. Chair.
Rosa, I shall now ask you to leave the meeting. Trustee De Rosa, I shall now ask you to leave the meeting.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to appeal that decision.
Thank you. Uh, I'll need a second for that, Trustee O'Brien. Yeah, a second.
Point of, uh, point of order, it's not appealed, it's not, can be, cannot be appealed.
Yes, you're right, Trustee Murphy.
I'd like to get a parliament, I'd like to get a parliamentary opinion on that, Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien, okay, I'll get the parliamentarian. In the past, we have followed the same system. Uh, Parliamentarian Kapoor, uh, how would you advise me?
Uh, Chair, it's it's not explicit in the bylaws. Sorry, I'm hearing a neck. Causing me to be, speak haltingly. Thank you, I believe that's corrected. Chair, it's not explicit in the bylaws whether the chair's decision to remove a member is appealable. The past practice of this board has been that it is not. And while I am loath to interpret the law, the law, the Education Act is explicit that it is the chair's discretion and decision on whether to remove any individual from the meeting.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, so Trustee O'Brien, uh, we have, uh, we have the code of conduct. We have certain expectations from trustees. Based on that, the decision was warning one, warning two, and warning three. And the trustee has been removed from the meeting. You have raised a point of order to appeal that. Based on past practices, uh, your point of order is not not valid. And I shall not allow the appeal. So we shall now move on with the discussion on this topic. So next up, we have Trustee Guza. Trustee Guza, your hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, um, for the report. Um, and and thank you for, to Koski Minsky, to Ms. Huggins for, uh, for putting this timeline together. I just have a question. Um, I know earlier it was said that a draft should be around December for the equity audit. I'm just wondering if, um, the way this was put together was in consideration of, you know, um, it kind of merging with the equity audit. Should there be any changes that need to be added in that, uh, I, you know, I guess it was advantageous for that we had Koski Minsky, um, help create this guideline, um, so that it works in conjunction. Does that make sense? Am I making any sense whatsoever? Because I feel like I'm not.
Thank you, Trustee Guza, Ms. Jeraman.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Question, and I can get us started off and Ms. Huggins can definitely add if she would like to. So absolutely, um, the, uh, when we talked about the the process for creating the strategy, it was building on much of the work that Koski Minsky is already doing i- in terms of, uh, you know, some of the policy review and some of that, uh, feedback collection. But, uh, in discussion, uh, it was sort of highlighted that because the equity audit is a broad equity, um, focus, this one will have a particular focus on issues of, um, you know, anti-black racism and black excellence. So it'll be further refined, but that equity audit will found, will build the foundation of of much of that work as well. If you'd like to add anything, um, Ms. Huggins?
Ms. Huggins?
Thank you. Just to respond, uh, and and in addition, uh, that is the case. It was was, uh, compiled in conjunction with the strategy and the equity audit where we are and in a manner that allows us to utilize the information from the equity audit. And in particular, some of the, uh, consultations in the equity audit will be used as well for the strategy, uh, to build a strategic plan. And we have allowed for that purposefully.
Trustee Guza?
Uh, thank you. That's, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you, uh, did, thank you for the report and thank you, thank you for both of you. That's amazing.
Thank you. Up next is Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to echo, uh, Trustee Guza's sentiment. I think the report is, uh, is fantastic. It's actually more than than I was hoping for or expecting. Um, so I see it really as connective tissues, right? Where we've worked on different, um, areas over the last four years regarding, um, regarding equity and and I see the strategic plan as as the connective tissue that will help synthesize that, uh, and this report is very comprehensive. Uh, so I thank you, thank you both for your your hard work. I, you know, I like the fact that it's it's realistic and it is complete and it allows us to get a, uh, an understanding of what the potential costs are. So, um, great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Up next is Vice Regnum.
Um, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, and I don't want to take up too much time by echoing. Um, but it is, it's a great report. Um, I'm very appreciative of how complicated a task this is, um, trying to incorporate all of the, um, different components, the different stakeholders that are involved, um, what we're currently doing, what needs to be done, and being respectful of timelines and capacity and bandwidth. And, um, I think that this report has addressed, uh, all of those. Um, and so, um, you know, certainly, um, I I look forward to seeing how this all comes together and how this all rolls out. Uh, but just very, very appreciative of the approach that's been taken, the commitment to getting this done. It's very evident by the report. Um, and what's also evident is the work, great work that we are currently doing and how we can build on that, um, which is also really important. Um, so thank you to everybody that's been involved. And like I said, I look forward to seeing, um, how this rolls out, what that stakeholder engagement looks like, what that feedback looks like, um, and how we start to see the impact, um, of this work in the board. So thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you, Vice Regnum. Up next is, uh, Trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Um, I'm a broken record at this point. I take the student part of my student trustee title very seriously. But we've heard from students throughout the past couple of years, specifically, um, those of our senators and those of our students that have lived experiences as Black students in our board, that they have unique experiences, they have distinct needs. Um, there are distinct actions that we need to take to help, uh, ensure that they can achieve, believe and belong um, just as well as the rest of us and that we can support them to the best of their ability. And that's a common theme that we've heard throughout the past two years. So I'd just like to echo the thanks that everyone has said, um, and commend you for your thorough, um, and well-done work. And I'm sure that we will bring this, will be bringing this back to Senate, um, who will receive it with open arms and much excitement for the work that's to come.
Thank you, Trustee Bowie. I do not see any other hands up. So once again, uh, Dr. Klein, to to Ms. Jeraman, uh, thank you for all the work that you've been doing and we really appreciate, we look forward to, uh, to some great, uh, outcomes from this report and we progress. Thank you so much. Moving on down to the next, uh, item under staff reports is, uh, nine point two. Milton number nine Catholic Elementary School, uh, School Boundary Review Committee, Committee Recommendations. Superintendent Merrick, please present the highlights of your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Uh, as trustees would know, the board was approved to construct a new six hundred and seventy-one people place elementary school with a five-room childcare for the community in southeast Milton in late twenty twenty-one, uh, which we named the Milton number nine Catholic Elementary School. Uh, subsequently, staff initiated a school boundary review in May of twenty twenty-two uh, to establish the catchment for the school, uh, and subsequently established a school boundary review committee, uh, which consisted of several parent reps, uh, from the prospective school community. Uh, the committee initially met in June of twenty twenty-two, uh, to review various boundary options. Uh, and and in their first meeting, the committee selected one preferred option. Uh, that preferred option was then presented at a virtual public information session in September of twenty twenty-two, uh, for community feedback. Looking at some of the community feedback, uh, which was presented back to the community or to the, uh, to the committee reps, uh, fifty-eight percent of the survey respondents supported the proposed boundary uh, and a further twenty-three percent were neutral on the, uh, on the proposed option. Uh, and then, like I mentioned, this feedback was brought back to the School Boundary Review Committee of, at their October meeting for their consideration. Uh, and the School Boundary Review Committee then decided to proceed with this boundary option, uh, for recommendation to the board here tonight. Uh, you can see the boundary option, uh, in in graphical form at a map, uh, in appendix B of the report tonight. Um, the School Boundary Review also considered legacy exceptions for students, uh, something we would in the past refer to as grandfathering, um, for students in patches V fifty-seven to attend Saint Scholastica, uh, as well as patches J thirty-eight, K forty, P thirty-five, P thirty-seven and P thirty-eight, uh, to attend Saint Benedict's School uh, as legacy exceptions, as mentioned. There, there's a lot more detail in the report outlining those legacy exceptions, uh, that the, uh, the School Boundary Review Committee is recommending to the board. Uh, so we'll have one, uh, resolution, uh, which is included in the report tonight, uh, that will be brought forward at the November first, uh, regular meeting of the board. Uh, and the the resolution does have three parts to it. Um, the first part is recommending the proposed boundary changes to create the catchment for the new Milton number nine elementary school. Uh, and then the second and third parts of the, uh, of the resolution, uh, involve those legacy exceptions, as mentioned, uh, for students that are currently attending, uh, some of the schools in the area that would be affected. So, um, and then, uh, looking forward, uh, like I mentioned, the the resolution will come back to the November first uh, meeting of the board. Uh, we would also hear any delegations, uh, that wish to speak to the matter at the November first meeting, uh, as a, as part of this boundary review committee. Um, and, you know, before, uh, before we open up for questions, I do want to thank the the, uh, parent representatives on the School Boundary Review Committee. Um, you know, this one, we had, we had a couple of meetings as well as a virtual public information session. Uh, and it does take up parents' times in in the evening. So I want to thank the members. I think it's in appendix A, you can see that the the names of the committee members. Uh, but I want to thank them for their involvement, uh, and also thank our staff, uh, um, most notably the planning department staff, uh, that puts a lot of time into preparing the materials uh, for these boundary committees, um, and and making sure they go smoothly. So, uh, thanks to the parent reps and to the, uh, planning group, uh, for their involvement on this and happy to take any questions that trustees may have on this, uh, School Boundary Review Recommendation for the Milton number nine Catholic Elementary School.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick for presenting your report. Uh, we have Trustee Murphy, so Milton trustee, you're the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, I, um, witnessed the, um, the school boundary reviews. I'm not allowed to talk. They actually send duct tape and I'm allowed to speak during those, those meetings, which, uh, I'm not offended. That's okay. Um, great work. Uh, first of all, I I would like to to thank our parents, um, who, uh, who attended the meetings. Um, you know, we tend to see a lot of the same names that volunteer and and give up their time. There is a lot involved with the school boundary reviews. There's a lot of moving parts, especially, uh, in South Milton where we're making accommodations for, uh, Saint Ceteri at number ten, which impacts Saint Scholastica now, which will further impact, um, number nine. So there's a lot of moving parts, um, and it changes. Decisions that we made a year and a half ago or two years ago are are in a different light now. So, um, I'd like to thank the parents, I'd like to thank our staff. There's a lot of hard work that goes into this and a lot of considerations, specialty programs, busing, uh, the rate of construction, the neighborhoods, um, traffic flows. So it's a lot. It it's, um, you know, there's a lot of great discussions. It's very done very thoughtfully and it's done at a specific point in time where we have a certain amount of information. So, so we need to keep that, uh, in mind also. Um, great work again, um, and, um, uh, let's hope that we get this passed the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. I do not see any other hands up. So I'll just pass a comment here that, uh, I'll echo what Trustee Murphy has, uh, just said, uh, great meeting. Uh, I'm, I would like to thank our parents for the collaboration and the work that they have done uh, part of the boundary review process. So thank you for your contributions. I was not able to attend the last meeting, uh, due to another board event. But again, I've been in the past and I really appreciate the work that you have done. And thank you to our staff, uh, for providing support and guidance. Uh, thank you so much. I see Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up. Trustee O'Brien, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I want to just echo what our chair said. I'm really impressed with this. There are so many things involved in this boundary review and in the midst of all the construction problems that are out there. It's amazing, uh, my comments to the staff that you came, that you managed to get through it. It's, it's, um, it's almost a work of art. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Uh, with that, we shall now move on to the next order of business, which is information item. Uh, before I jump to student trustees update, uh, just small corrections, the two notices of motions will be placed at ten point four and ten point five. I said it ten point two and ten point three, my mistake, but it'll be ten point four and ten point five. So the first item, ten point one is student trustee update. Student trustees, please present your reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Um, I will be presenting the achieving portion of our report for tonight. Um, as is customary for this time of year, we're resuming in-person university college fairs for grade twelve and returning students. Um, very important to our students. They feel as though they are benefiting greatly from those. Um, as well, our our home senates have begun their meetings and and connecting with their uh, respective administrations, planning their initiatives for the year, connecting with their student bodies. Um, very exciting with that. And then, as I mentioned, uh, previously in bait tonight, um, a large current, uh, a large and current student concern is mental health resources available to students as many have felt the transition back to normal learning has led to an immediate onset of stress and related symptoms. Um, we're looking forward to addressing this with our student wellbeing co-chairs in, as members of the Mental Health Strategy Committee for this year. But I'd also like to say, just to elaborate on this a little bit more, um, is that it's not also just a mental health issue because when all of our students are experiencing these symptoms of stress and not necessarily mental illness, which is a lot of our work with mental health is related to. But when all of our students are experiencing the stress and feeling as though they're not supported throughout this transition back to normal learning, that's a concern that we feel is very important for us to bring to the board. And I think that a lot of students, um, feel as though they are, uh, being, being transitioned back into normal learning, um, at a very fast pace and sometimes faster than they are able to handle. And there's a lot of expectations going into this year that things will go completely back to normal without, um, consideration for the fact that some of our students haven't been able to keep up. So that's a concern that, uh, that we've been hearing like quite a bit. Um, and I've been hearing it from almost every student that I've talked to when I ask them what's your main concern right now? That is it. So, um, it's very important to our students and I I just want to emphasize that's something that we wanted to bring to the board tonight.
For believing, uh, the student trustees are preparing to attend the twenty twenty-two OSTA Fall General Meeting. As members of the Catholic Board Council Cabinet, uh, we are preparing our Catholics, Catholic active service for the weekend. The Catholic Board Council will be collecting non-perishable food items from all student trustees to donate to a local food bank in downtown Toronto. As well, they'll be tending mass at Saint Michael's Basilica on Sunday. The student, student trustees Chua and Kuzma will be filling their roles as Faith Ambassador and Western Regional Representative respectively, and are looking forward to engaging in productive and informative discussion of issues in Catholic education over the weekend. Student trustee Bowie will also be leading sessions in her role as CBC Vice President.
And thank you, everyone. I'll be covering the final section, the belonging section. Um, and I would just like to start with, thank you so much to our chair and our director and everyone, um, who's able to send us to OSTA ECO. It's honestly an amazing experience where we get to bond with our student trustees across Ontario. Um, we are all forever grateful. It's such an amazing professional development experience for all three of us. So just wanted to say thank you guys so much. Um, now onto belonging. Student trustees Chua and Bowie are currently working with a bullying prevention and awareness committee alongside superintendent Cordero on our long-term strategy for this school year and initiatives for bullying prevention and awareness week. Our main priorities for the school year include survey data collection, focus group development, student and parent engagement, school climate reviews, peer-to-peer mentorship, and creating safe environments for all of our staff, students and parents in the Halton Catholic Church School Board. The student trustees and the student senate are working alongside Ms. Jariman, the Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity for the Halton Catholic Church School Board, on promotional poster and video of the student. on promotional poster and video of the students of student senate testimonials to promote the hate or bias motivated incidents and reporting.
Thank you, trustees. Do we have any questions for our students? Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, but a comment. Thank you, student trustees, for this very succinct and impressive report. I'm especially impressed with the collecting of non-perishable food items for that you're that you're collecting and giving to the food banks. This is truly faith in action and shows true leadership. Keep up the good work. Thanks so much.
Trustee O'Brien, trustee Guzzo, you're the floor.
I thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and always to student trustees. I love listening to your reports and all the wonderful things that you're doing. But again, you know, trustee Bowie, you raised again the piece about mental health and I keep coming back to it. Maybe, I don't know. Is it possible to ask a question of Superintendent Ballow to maybe talk about like what mental health isn't just about being reactive, it's about being preventative. And you know, you keep going back to it. I keep hearing you you talk about it. So to me, that means it's it's really at an all-time high. So I don't know, maybe is it possible to ask Superintendent Ballow to maybe talk about some of the preventative stuff? Because I think it's really important and it's germane to their report, Mr. Chair.
I'd rather be a little careful. This is student trustee report. And we could take that up at a different point in time because I just don't want to go off track. Let's stay focused. On the student report, you can ask students a question on mental health. Do you have any, do you need any advice?
Trustee Bowie, would you like to hear from Superintendent Ballow or trustees, student trustees, would you like to hear from Superintendent Ballow? Maybe some of the preventative measures that are being put in place to help high school students cope? Because I keep hearing it being amplified, which means it's 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 really concerning to you students. And correct me if I'm wrong. Did I mishear that?
No, through you, Mr. Chair. I'd also say that this is something that we, like I said, we're going to be continuing discussions with staff and we haven't started those yet, so we will be having those. So I don't want to put anyone on the spot when they haven't had the time to consult with us yet. But if trustees would like to hear from Superintendent Ballow, of course, we'd love to hear as well.
So, Mr. Chair, could you please, you know, humor me and have Superintendent Ballow maybe talk about some of the preventative things that have already been put in place?
Okay, let's go to Superintendent Ballow. Superintendent Ballow do not want to put you on the spot as student trustees have said, but if you would like to.
Of course. Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I'm a little congested this evening. So, you know, I did hear what trustee Bowie said, and I do want to acknowledge and I appreciate what she said as well with respect to having the opportunity to meet with our mental health advisory. So the students are on our mental health advisory committee and we were actually supposed to have our first meeting this week and we've decide decided to postpone it. Because I know that trustee Bowie has been in communication with our Chief of Mental Health, Glenda Brown, around selecting some students from their student senate to be part of the committee as well. So we really felt it was important that we had a fulsome conversation with all the members. So we have rescheduled that meeting until after the twenty seventh, I believe, is when the students are selecting their additional members. We had a very positive start, I would say, to the school year. And the other point that I would note that I heard from trustee Bowie, which I think really aligns with how we've started the school year, is that it is a shared responsibility to support student mental health. Of course, we have designated staff in our buildings such as CYCs and social workers, but we really recognize that oftentimes the teachers in classes and other staff in the school building are the ones who know students the best. And we really are focusing on building staff capacity as one of our four main areas in terms of our mental health action plan. And what we have demonstrated already this year is we had a very focused PA day on the first day of school on September first, I believe. And we spent a half day on information and materials that were shared with all staff at all schools at both elementary and secondary. And it was a very robust presentation that included resources that teachers could use, that they could provide to students in their classes. And it was presented in collaboration with the school CYC and social worker, again, sending the message that we do absolutely have professionals in our buildings. But it is a shared responsibility and the mental health scenario that trustee Bowie described, I think, is a very important one. We would want any educator in any class to be able to identify a student that may be struggling. If there's a stress that's come up with regards to an assignment or some type of expectation that's being placed, they should also be able to help support that student in navigating that situation. With that said, as the Board of Trustees would know, last year, we implemented mental health literacy lessons from grade nine through twelve in all of our secondary schools. We're the only board in the province who mandated those mental health literacy lessons. And this year, we're going to continue. We did do a survey at the end of the year and we got a lot of excellent feedback from both staff and students. So we have decided that we're going to continue with the consolidation of those mental health lessons this year. And we have already met with our curriculum partners who are supporting that work to start the rollout at secondary next month at the beginning of of November. And some of the lessons, there are four lessons that are provided by School Mental Health Ontario that focus on stress, how to mitigate stress, how to get support for yourself, how to get support for a friend. They're very important lessons. So we do see the value in continuing with those lessons this year. And we did hear from our student trustees, our student senate in the spring as well about the importance of those lessons in the class. And again, that supports the model and the messaging that it is a shared responsibility. And what we are going to be doing this year that is new is we are going to be introducing and implementing the mental health literacy lessons at the elementary level. So School Mental Health Ontario did prepare lessons over the course of the summer. They were rolled out to us. So we've already gone through all of those materials to be able to provide again those in-class supports for all students across the entire school. In terms of resources, we continue to promote the tiered model of intervention. We know that tier one is continue to provide more intensive supports as they are needed. And then we continue to promote through social media and our school board website and school websites a number of different community resources and supports. We've also put together a mental health toolkit that is really a one-stop shop. There are a lot of resources that we provide to the system. So we have created a toolkit that can be used by administrators. They can use it for staff meetings. We've created weekly memo comments that schools can include for parents to get out into the community. And again, a lot of connections to curriculum content so that teachers can also in include those lessons and those points from the mental health toolkit. In fact, on Thursday evening, we're doing a presentation for our CAC meeting and I'd be happy to bring a presentation as such to the Board of Trustees if you'd be interested in something more formal.
Thank you.
Thank you, student trustees, for your report as 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 always brings to the voice of the table. Thank you so much. Moving on to the next information item, ten point two, construction update. Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have the through you, we have the construction report for October. On this one, we have not not a lot to update on, but we've recently begun the construction of the Milton number nine Catholic Elementary School project. You can see not a lot of work on site yet, but we are mobilizing on site with our new contractor there. We have some security fencing and some silt fencing going up right now. And they were working last week to do all the layouts for the building and the services. And this week, we actually have begun on putting in footings. So we're doing trench footings this week. And then next they will proceed with the underground services and off we go with construction of a new school. So we also have as well that we also have the groundbreaking scheduled for this starting next week. So the ceremonial groundbreaking is next Friday for this this site here as well. So happy to be off and running on another on another new build in Southeast Milton and happy to take any questions that trustees may have on this project here tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Murphy, your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Superintendent Merrick. At this point, I know you don't you don't have a crystal ball, but do you foresee any supply chain issues with HVAC equipment, electrical switches? The things that historically over the last two years have been causing problems for us. And then the other side of that is from having services brought to site are, you know, Milton Hydro or those types of services, are they backlog with all the construction currently going on in Milton? Do you foresee any any potential delays?
Superintendent Merrick.
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I think with it is a service lot. So we have services at the lot line. So I don't foresee any issues with servicing the the building because everything that we're putting in is kind of local to our site and we have services at the lot line. As far as supply chain goes, you know, we'll definitely do our best to have, you know, shop drawings done, you know, some of them are already done already. And we're ordering equipment now. However, I would say, you know, it's been on our recent builds over the past couple of years through the pandemic where we've had these supply chain issues. It hasn't typically been the same item on 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 different jobs that have created the supply chain issue. So I I don't think we have a whole lot of foresight into into what things will be shorted and when. Because it just seems to be, you know, to vary from from job to job. So it's really tough to predict. I would say we're probably not going to get lucky enough that we'll have no, you know, supply chain issues. But, you know, whether those actually impact the schedule will remain to be seen. But we're trying to do our best now and get a lot of our orders in, get them in in production. So they're ready on site. We've even been creative with, you know, if there are items that we can get early, you know, maybe we take a bit of a hit on 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 storage and 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 housing those items for a bit. But the the storage costs are much less than than the than the delay cost would be. So if we can get items earlier, we'll look at storing them in a in a secure site and and absorbing those costs as opposed to the delay cost. So but you know, I I I I think the days of when we get buildings done in, you know, seven or eight months like we have in the past, maybe 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 behind us at least for the foreseeable future. But we're hopeful we can still get kind of those, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen-month builds underway and and and, you know, we'll definitely do it as fast as we can.
Superintendent Merrick, trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. How are we making out on number three?
Yeah. So for for Milton three, we're still working through our municipal approvals. We are getting very close on our draft plan subdivision, which then opens us up to getting a building permit. So hopefully securing that this week. The the city of the town of Milton is already reviewing our building permit. So they won't release it until we have our our draft plan subdivision complete. But we're getting very, very close on that. It's been a lot of back and forth with the town. And I know the town is looking at our building permit submission as well, at least to get us moving on site with foundations and superstructure. So that seems to be imminent as well. And then as far as securing a contractor for it, the tender closes tomorrow. So we're very close on on getting to the point where we have bidders on the on the job and and that closes tomorrow. So we'll see what the pricing looks like tomorrow as well as the, you know, the complement of bidders that we have for the for the project.
Oh, it looks like you're you're offering another question. No, I just I won't take advantage. I just wanted to 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 thank Superintendent Merrick and his team along with all of the school boundary reviews and and regular maintenance. We are the developers on the property on number three, which that is a significant difference. It is very complex. It adds multiple layers to the project and to construction. And thankfully, we have the skill in-house to do that. So thank you very much. And and I just wanted to acknowledge all your hard work and your staff's hard work. Great job.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Guzzo, you have your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And actually, trustee Murphy asked some of the things I was going to ask. He's on the ball when it comes to Milton. I know you you've got it taken care. You've got it in lockdown. I was just going to ask in in regarding these these new builds is is do you see any more stumbling blocks other than supply chain issues coming up? Because I know with Oakville, there's been issues. You know, anything that you foresee in that crystal ball of yours, Superintendent Merrick?
Superintendent Merrick.
The supply chain one is going to be an issue for the foreseeable future. But I think, you know, we're like I mentioned, we're trying to find some workarounds for it and and, you know, getting getting ahead of the ahead of the orders and the and the and the task on the job. So we're doing our best on that on that front. I can say as for Oakville four, which you might be interested in trustee Guzzo, we did get a key approval at a Oakville Town Council meeting earlier this evening. So we're doing double duty on that one tonight. But we got a key approval there, which will help us move things along with municipal approvals for the North Oakville number four Elementary School. And that tender went out this morning. So we have another one going up for tender now. That closes in about three and a half weeks. So we'll be getting close to getting contractor and entries lined up for North Oakville number four as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, trustee Guzzo.
I know. Thank you, actually. So that was timely. Thanks, Superintendent America. I'm glad I asked the question and that it it coincided. So that's that's good news all around. Thank you. And thank you for all the work.
Thank you. I just saw trustee Ovanchenara's hand up. Trustee Ovanchenara, you you have a question?
I do. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Merrick. Superintendent Merrick, you have three guesses what I'm going to ask, and the first two don't count. Have we heard anything, a denial, anything from the ministry on anything in Holy Cross? Or do you think there's anything coming? Or what would our next steps be? Very quickly, you don't not a whole summary?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, we have not heard any updates on Holy Cross. And I have also not heard any updates on the next round of capital priorities. So whether the the past round is dead or and they're moving on to the next round, I have no updates on that either. So I I apologize for that. But there's been no communication from the ministry on that.
No, thank you, not your not your to apologize for. If you need anything, please reach out. I'm here for you.
Question here, trustee Superintendent Merrick. Is the date planned for September twenty twenty-three or later? For Miss Number Nine.
Yeah. So I mean, like I would say, in in the past, you know, a ten-month build would be fairly reasonable and, you know, fairly reasonable for us. This will be a challenging one, given the supply chain issues. So we definitely are not giving up on September twenty twenty-three yet. We'll obviously see as we get into the spring, how things are progressing, you know, how weather was this winter and and see where we are in the springtime. But we're pushing ahead as fast as we can and still targeting September twenty twenty-three for opening, even though we know it will be a challenge.
Superintendent Merrick for presenting your report. We shall now move on to the next information item, ten point three, Advanced Placement Feasibility Study. Superintendent Cordiero, could you present the highlights of your report?
Attorney Mike. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report is to share the findings of the feasibility study conducted to explore the implementation of the Advanced Placement Program in an additional secondary school in Burlington. A survey was developed in partnership with Research Services to gather information from parents and guardians of students currently in grade six, seven, and eight in the Corpus Christi and Notre Dame family of elementary schools. Their voice would provide insights into the this opportunity and the level of satisfaction with their future secondary program and pathway. The survey was sent out through an email invitation to provide feedback between September twenty-nine and October sixth, twenty twenty-two. Overall, the report contains data from three hundred and sixty-five survey responses. Seventy-four percent of the respondents indicated that they would be very or extremely interested in enrolling their child in AP courses at either Corpus Christi or Notre Dame. The top two influential reasons that respondents selected were one, future opportunities, seventy-six percent for Corpus Christi and seventy-one percent for Notre Dame. And two, courses at And two, courses at the level of challenge, sixty-four percent for Corpus Christi and sixty percent for Notre Dame. Overall, seventy percent of respondents from both elementary family of schools indicated that they believe their child is either likely or very likely to enroll in AP courses. In addition to the online survey, both schools were consulted to determine levels of pre-existing training. Notably, the department heads of each of the three core subject areas of English, math and science at Corpus Christi have training in AP programming as well as experience, along with the department head of religion and AP curriculum instruction. At Notre Dame of the current academic council, only the department head of math has such training and instructional experience.
Superintendent Cordero, could I interrupt? There's some little housekeeping work to be done, it's ten thirty. Sorry, oh, my apologies, I'm still the old time. Sorry, Superintendent Cordero, please, please proceed.
Not a problem, Mr. Chair. I will continue. The lone administrator with previous AP training is the principal at Corpus Christi, who is a former AP coordinator at Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School in Oakville. As well, a current vice principal at Corpus Christi has twelve years of curriculum consultant experience with our board. As indicated in the charts of the report, student enrollment data reveals that the pool of potential student candidates to enroll in AP prep in grade nine is larger at Corpus Christi than Notre Dame. The difference is about forty. The difference is more pronounced among the catchments of public school students. That difference is about four hundred in favor of Corpus Christi. Regarding current facility utilization, Corpus Christi has a student enrollment of one thousand and sixty-one and is under capacity by two hundred and forty-three students. By comparison, Notre Dame has a student enrollment of one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven and is under capacity by fifty-six students. To offer trustees further context, additional background information has been provided with regards to what AP courses and the process of becoming a recognized AP school by the AP College Board. The proposed startup budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. This initial cost is approximate and moving forward will need to be built in the HCDSB budget annually. The cost does not reflect potential facility upgrades or additional portables to accommodate students. HCDSB has currently been budgeting thirty thousand dollars per school on an annual basis. The AP courses will require additional teaching staff and training as implementation enrollment increases. Senior staff met on Monday, October seventeenth to discuss the results of the AP feasibility study and noted that in addition to the long-term financial implications of another AP school and increased smaller classes for clustered AP students in the senior grades, there will be an impact on student enrollment at Assumption. I can share that Assumption receives approximately twenty-five students from each of the Corpus Christi and Notre Dame communities. The current approximate number of Notre Dame and Corpus Christi students who currently attend Assumption in the AP program are about one hundred students for a total of two hundred in total attending Assumption. Should it be the will of the school board to expand AP programming in HCDSB beginning in September twenty twenty-three, which is a viable option at this point, the results of the feasibility study indicate the selection of Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School. That concludes my reports. I welcome any questions from members of the board trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. I see trustee Guzzo, your hand is up, trustee Guzzo, you're the floor.
Yes, thank you. I, I have several questions, so I'll ask my two and then go back into the thing. Thank you for the report, Superintendent Cordero. So my first question is the feasibility. So you're saying it's viable, um, because I'm looking at the numbers and we've got a total of from grade nine to twelve in all municipalities, one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five students. And if I look at, uh, and this is, I'm looking at the report, by the way, that you provided to us in February of twenty twenty-two, where this motion originated from. So by at Assumption, one hundred and twenty-nine are enrolled in grade nine. By the time it's in grade twelve, only seventy-six. And cross boundaries, only twenty-six of those students, based on thirty-five percent, um, are from cross boundary. Grade twelve, Bishop Reading, we started a hundred and sixty-five. In, in all of the schools that maintain enrollment right through from pre-AP to AP, Milton seems to be the one with the highest percentage from grade nine to grade twelve. Christ the King, we can't really comment on because it's, it's new. Holy Trinity, again, one thirty-seven down to sixty-six. And STA is even less at ninety-two to thirty-three. And that shows you that's two schools in Oakville. We see the decline from grade nine to, and that's with two schools. So I'm looking at it and from a feasibility standpoint, what is the projected numbers of enrollment? And where will we be drawing those from? Will we be drawing them from our own board or will we, will we be drawing from outside of our board? I don't see that in this report.
Superintendent Cordero?
Okay, so I, I, I think the charts reflect the numbers of students, um, at each of the two families of schools. Corpus Christi would draw from its own catchment. So currently they, about twenty-five students travel to Assumption each year at their own expense, uh, without board transportation. So the numbers may actually be higher, uh, because some students may not have the means, uh, financially or the logistics to make their way there. So, um, from an annual perspective, they would be drawing from their own catchment. They may also draw, uh, from the Notre Dame catchment. Uh, Notre Dame is north, uh, in Burlington and there might be interest and feasibility study does show that there is interest. If the program was at Corpus Christi, there will be Notre Dame students who will opt out or who will choose to go to Corpus Christi for AP, uh, instead of Assumption or exercise that option, which they perhaps were not able to exercise because of the north, south, uh, transit, challenges that may exist as, as opposed to east, west and the north. As well, there would be a draw from the public school system. And as I noted in my most, uh, recent presentation here tonight, uh, the difference in the Corpus Christi catchment is an additional four hundred public school students above and beyond what Notre Dame has in its catchment. As everyone may know here, uh, Corpus Christi draws from all students north of Highway five. Uh, Highway five is the one area in Burlington has experiencing growth, uh, relative to everywhere else because of expansion of residential, uh, construction. So that would be an area that Corpus Christi would hopefully continue to draw from. And to give you some comparables, um, because they differ at different schools. Assumption High School and their AP program draws, uh, about fifteen percent annually from the public school system. Bishop Reading draws about forty percent, uh, from the public school system. Uh, Holy Trinity draws about thirty percent from the public school system. Christ the King draws about fifteen percent from the public school system. And, um, as you mentioned earlier, um, they're St. Thomas Aquinas, but St. Thomas Aquinas offers an IB program and that's, and that would be different.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, follow up?
Well, I have a clarification first and, and well, actually I have a follow-up too. So you mentioned transit about from north, south. I would have assumed that part of that would have been a part of this study to say that these are the challenges and this is why you've chosen this location. I feel like I need more information than what's presented here. I also noted that to rely on the survey results, we can't really rely on those survey results because of the numbers. But you made a comment that students not being able to get there from means or logistics. We're not suggesting that if students didn't have the means, whether it be from a socioeconomic standpoint, that we wouldn't support them because I know that that, that's not the case, correct? Like we, that was more of a, they couldn't get there because.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee.
Superintendent Cordero?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Guzzo. When I'm saying they don't have the financial means, there's a cost to traveling uh, from, if you reside in the north of Burlington to the south Burlington, we do not support students in AP programming with transportation. So we do not support their ability to travel south if they want to attend an AP program.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, your, uh, follow-up question?
No, just to clarify though. So if they don't have the financial means though, are you saying that we don't make exceptions for students?
We do not make exceptions. Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. We do not cover the travel costs of students who cannot financially afford to travel from north Burlington to south Burlington or from one catchment to another across our system, be it IB or AP.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo, your, uh, follow-up?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll go back in the queue because there's some.
Okay, uh, uh, next up is trustee Kuzma. Trustee Kuzma, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through Mr. Chair, I don't really have much knowledge of how like enrollment and everything. I don't know much about the numbers and I, so I can't really say we should do this, we shouldn't do this. But just to provide my insight on as a student from basically as far as assumption as possible, coming from St. Anne, who wanted to go to, um, sorry, who wanted to go to Assumption. And I had basically done everything to get into Assumption, but I decided against it as getting down there every single day was basically not possible. I'd have to find people to set up a carpool with, or I'd have to take a bus all the way down to the go station and then get into another bus and then go all the way to the school and then walk a kilometer to it. So basically, I think if we were to get a pro, uh, an AP program, getting it somewhere more centralized is super helpful because I know five people from my graduating class at St. Anne did go to that Assumption program and all of them struggled to get there every single day, unless they had parents who worked from home or some sort of ride program with the other people that, that came from this area. So I know that even having the proximity of Corpus to Assumption versus the proximity of Corpus to Notre Dame, they're still much closer to each other than to Notre Dame or, or to Assumption. So having at one of those schools, I know a lot of people from my school who also went to Notre Dame. So basically, I don't, obviously not scripted this, but basically having a, something more centralized as, as opposed to Assumption, which is very far south would be, I'd be very happy with that.
Thank you, you have your comment and no worries about scripting or not, but, uh, trust, uh, Superintendent Cordero, uh, trustee Kuzma has raised a, a question of being central. You have taken a look at that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to student trustee Kuzma. There is evidence to suggest that there, for logistical reasons, as you explained, and sometimes for financial costs, as I explained to trustee Guzzo, um, there is a desire for AP programming in the north that would make it more accessible to all students in the north. There's a, there, there are opportunities still for students, for example, at Notre Dame, if, if maybe logistically because, um, they may live closer to Assumption to still attend Assumption. So I would assume that Assumption would draw from, um, or Notre Dame students would go to either Corpus Christi or Assumption if they wanted to pursue AP program, programming. I, I think it's also worth noting that, um, the French immersion program and the extended French program are at Notre Dame currently and they do draw students in, uh, to their school from both Corpus Christi and Assumption. So this would allow, um, an opportunity for each school to have a unique program to serve its student body. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. Uh, I think it'd be interesting to know how the process works, if you could spend some time with Superintendent Cordero and understand how it's done. So on the speakers list, we have trustee Murphy, trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, through you to trustee Kuzma. I live off script. You can't even see script from, from where I am, so don't worry about that. Uh, through you to, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cordero. So this, uh, request came from the board. I guess it may, I don't know if this is a fair question or not, and I'm not sure if you can answer it. You know, is there a groundswell movement? Is there, is there that desire from the community? Uh, you know, my, my perspective is we want to have as much, uh, a broad offer for our, our programs as we can in all our schools to make us unique and, and drive demand to our schools. It, do you have a sense that this, there is that groundswell movement and desire, um, for this program?
Superintendent Cordero?
I, I know it's a small sample size and, uh, the survey and trustee Guzzo did point that out. So through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee, uh, Murphy. Clearly, you, you have two hundred students already traveling north, south to Assumption. That's a significant number if you think about percentages. Two hundred students is about twenty percent of Assumption and would make up twenty percent of the current Corpus Christi. So, um, let's assume that we would add to those numbers because some students, as I said before, logistically, and as, uh, student trustee Kuzma noted, some students are not accessing that opportunity now at Assumption. Might it be twice the number? I don't know. That'd be speculation. I can maybe perhaps interject my past experiences, principal of Notre Dame, uh, prior, prior to this role. I can say there was strong interest amongst the Notre Dame community, uh, and the north in general, because there's a lot of interaction between, uh, Corpus Christi and Notre Dame on a lot of, and a lot of fronts. So based on my past experience, anecdotally, based on the, the, the limited size, uh, in the responses in the survey, it, it's still duly noted that seventy-four percent of those who did respond said they are very or extremely, uh, willing to or likely to, um, enroll in AP at Corpus Christi.
Thank you, trustee Murphy, uh, your follow-up?
So then the only, the, the concern would be, are we cannibalizing one program for another? Is that correct?
Superintendent Cordero?
Think, uh, through you, uh, trust, uh, Mr. Chair, to trustee Murphy. Cannibalizing, I guess, maybe, you know, I, I, I can't necessarily speak to that full descriptor, but I, i- if we look at the system as a whole, we currently have of the three schools in Oakville, one with IB and one with AP. We have the, the further school in the north in Holton Hills with an AP program. We have three schools, uh, one emerging in, in Milton, you know, still young, but we have three schools there, the largest of which have AP, has AP. And there, you know, we're currently undergoing a feasibility study to determine that, you know, the, the level of interest and desire in Milton for an IB school. So if, if that is a feasibility study that comes back with overwhelming interest and we move forward with a, uh, application that'll take about three years for an IB school in Milton, we now have another municipality with two out of the three schools with programming. If we don't move forward with an additional school in Burlington, and that's to the board of trustees, uh, to decide, we will be, there'll only be one of the three with additional, uh, with specialty program. If we want to move forward with the second school, um, I think the, the data suggests that Corpus Christi is best positioned. There, there's also the, the notion that there, you know, might be students in the Loyola community, for example, in Oakville, who may not be able to access, uh, the IB program at Aquinas or may not be able to access, uh, the program Holy Trinity. The Loyola to Corpus Christi is not all that far. So that might be another opportunity, but we have. So that might be another opportunity, but we haven't explored that, and I'm just putting that out there as a possibility. So just in reference of cannibalizing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Up next is Trustee Kuzo. You're on the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and maybe, hold on, I gotta make sure I'm reading my notes here because I'm trying to, to pay attention to what's being said. Projected enrollment, do we have an idea of what projected enrollment is? And maybe, I know we don't, I don't have it on me, and I apologize. I think maybe Superintendent Merrick, what our schools are looking like. Because I know we've been talking a lot about a decrease in enrollment, and we're trying to, to attract an increase. If, maybe we can talk about where those projected numbers are from the schools? I don't know if you have that data handy, Superintendent Merrick?
Superintendent Cordero, do you have any numbers?
Actually, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Kuzo. I am the superintendent responsible for secondary staffing.
Superintendent Cordero, do you have the numbers, the projected numbers?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
For all of the, for the enrollment from, like, the, you know, the five-year study that we were given by Superintendent Merrick? That's the one I'm referring to, those numbers.
Okay, then I, I can defer to Superintendent Merrick, obviously, but I can, I can give you, since I do secondary enrollment and staffing, I can share with you that over the last four years, Notre Dame has risen from nine hundred and forty students to one thousand one hundred and sixty students, and Corpus Christi has dropped from one thousand one hundred and forty students to one thousand and sixty or so students in that period of time. Now, I'll defer to Superintendent Merrick for those other details.
Superintendent Merrick.
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I would just look at our, our, our long-term projections, which is per the work that our planning group does. Looking at that, if I look at Corpus Christi, it ranges between eighty-four and ninety percent over the next fifteen years of utilization, so percentage of pupil places filled within the school. I felt like in Notre Dame, it ranges between ninety-four percent and a hundred and three percent. So again, they're both kind of fairly filled, are fairly full, but, you know, still with a little bit of space within the schools there. And I'd say anything beyond, kind of later on in those, in those projections is really placed on, projected housing starts in the area. And that's, you know, it's, it's a bit of art, it's a bit of science, and it is highly speculative as well. So it's, it's, it's difficult to project those numbers, but they both are fairly full, but do have a bit of space, both in the, in the near term and in over the next fifteen years.
Your follow-up?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
And I'll put the link in the, in the chat for, we don't have a chat anymore. If anyone wants a link to the report, let me know, and I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I'm glad you had, I knew you would have access to those numbers because I would not have been able to find it that quickly. So, okay, so how does, how did those projections play into this report? I guess is, I guess that's kind of what I was looking for, was to see the feasibility report with the projections that planning had done. And then, my next question is, is to Superintendent Loffs. We see a budget here. Is that realistic in putting a new program in a, in another school?
Superintendent Loffs.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. When we were looking at it, I guess it was for more for the perspective of at, at Corpus, where there's a lot of the training and such has already been, has already been developed, not developed, but have already been completed, I guess, for some of the staff members at that school. There's a lot of synergies coming at, at Corpus already relative to, to some of the other schools that we were, were looking at. Potentially, there could be some additional costs, as there always could be, but at this point in time, it really wouldn't necessarily be, be known in its entirety. And I guess one thing, as we've talked about, we do have declining enrollment, what we have seen over the last number of years, or not number of years, sorry, the last couple of years at least. And it looks like that we may be forecasting lower than we initially thought for this year as well. So that's another thing to be mindful of.
Thank you, Superintendent Loffs.
Just a clarification, thank you. And I think that, thank you, Superintendent Loffs, because you actually, that's, that's, I thought that's what I was trying to get at was, and you, you said it so much better than I did, so. That was kind of my concern, because I know that we've been talking a lot about the declining enrollment. So I'm, I'm just trying to, to see what best fits right now. And, and to me, just, just seems a little rushed, that's all.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzo. I thought I saw Trustee Kuzma's hand up there. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, okay. So that's fine. So I do not see any other hand-ups, so we shall move down to the next item, which is ten point four, which is the Notice of Motion, Anti-Black Racism Strategic Plan. Trustee Murphy, could you read the notice of motion?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Whereas the HCDSB seeks to achieve systems equity for black students and staff and eliminating, and the elimination of systemic and other forms of anti-black racism. Whereas the Board of Trustees has received a staff report which outlines the steps and financial resources required to develop a board-wide anti-black racism strategic plan that will assist the HCDSB in responding to dismantling and addressing anti-black racism so as to achieve a more respectful, accountable, equitable, diverse, and inclusive community. Be it resolved that the HCDSB Board of Trustees, direct, the Director of Education, to accept and adopt the framework laid out by Koski Minsky report titled Anti-Black Racism Strategic Plan Staff Report dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, to establish a steering committee to draft a three-year strategic plan for the elimination of anti-black racism and other forms of discrimination to be presented to the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three board meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. There is no discussion on that. The next item, which is the Notice of Motion, ten point five, Legal and Parliamentary, Rosie, could you read the title, please?
Legal Parliamentary and Consulting Expenses.
So this was put by Trustee De Rosa. Do you have the, the motion?
Whereas all legal, parliamentary, and consulting costs make up a significant part of the board's expenses and in support of the board's ongoing commitment to transparency, be it resolved that the Board of Directors instructs the Director of Education and the Secretary of the Board to prepare and report by the next board meeting an itemized list of all legal, parliamentary, and consulting expenses by date starting from twenty eighteen and detailing the amount contracted, the name of the provider, the purpose, the sponsor, and approval source.
Thank you, Rosie. There's no discussion on this item, too. Moving on to the next order of business, which is miscellaneous information. Eleven point one, minutes of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Policy Committee Meeting. It's in your package. Next order of business is correspondence. In your package, you will find a link to the Ministry memos as well as correspondence from Ms. Lorenko. And then, yes, I thought we have two minutes there. Shall now move on to the next order of business, which is open question period. We have one minute. We shall take a break and do some housekeeping right now. So we need to extend by thirty minutes. So I shall take it to a vote. Trustees, we are voting on extending that thirty minutes. Trustee Ohan Chanara, how do you vote?
In favor.
Yeah, we need a motion to extend. We've not done this in a long time, yeah. So we need a motion to extend. Trustee Kuzo moves.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. We'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you said you're in favor?
Yep, still in favor.
Trustee Kuzo. Vice Chair Agnew.
Favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Rosa, oh, sorry. Trustee Boy.
In favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
And trusted word is in favor. We will extend the meeting by thirty minutes to eleven thirty. Moving on to the next order of business is open question period. So we have a couple of questions here, and we are going to follow by law thirteen as written. The first question here, and Rosie, do you have the timer? It's two minutes per questioner. Question one, why was French immersion, extended French programs not yet been moved from Bishop Reading to St. Ceteri? Question, the movement of these programs was incorporated in the student enrollment figures used by the Boundary Review Committee when it made its recommendations to the board. St. Ceteri needs the student population that would be brought in by these programs in order to build a critical mass, and Bishop Reading needs to reduce its student population. Director Klein?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to call upon Superintendent Croll right now to respond.
And through you, Mr. Chair, and maybe I'll ask Superintendent Merrick to sort of help me out with this one. It is a little bit about the capacity at the elementary school that we're seeing Ceteri is currently at, although it's certainly a lower population than that building could hold. There is concern that we might reach the capacity and exceed the capacity of that building before we're able to move those students over. So although it might make sense right now to think about moving those students, I think it's just in terms of the actual space and the projected numbers for the next couple of years of that building, we might exceed the capacity of that site sooner rather than later.
And I'll read a question. It's a three-part question. Is there a code of conduct for members of CAC, CPIC, and school parent councils? Second part to this is, what are the resources, recourses available to the board if a member of CAC, CPIC, or a school council creates reputational risk for HCDSB by including their affiliations to HCDSB in their bio and posting antisemitic, racist, or discriminatory content on social media? And the third part is, what are the recourses available to the board if a member of CAC, CPIC, or a school council continuously arrests, accuses, denigrates other members, staff, or trustees in their email correspondence on social media or during meetings? Director Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair. These three questions that arrived later in the day today are ones that we would like to take back to our senior team and be able to work together on in order to come back at our next occasion and provide the board with a more fulsome response.
Thank you, Director Klein. So the response will be provided to the questioner along with the addition to the minutes of the next board meeting. So that's all we have for open question period. Like everyone, trustees to understand that we are going to follow by law thirteen as written down in our bylaws. The requirements need to be met for open question period moving forward. Moving on to the next order of business, which is in-camera items. We do not have to go in-camera. And the next order of business is resolution regarding absentees. We have had all trustees present today. And finally, the last order of business is the adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Trustee Kuzo, looking for a seconder.
Murphy.
Seconded by Trustee Murphy. All in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Vice Chair Agnew, could you please lead us in closing prayer?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I had it right here, ready to go. I just closed my documents. If you will join me in the Son of our Faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Gracious Father, thank you for making this day successful. As we depart, Lord, we ask you to be with us. May your angels go before us and clear the way so that we can reach home safely. Thank you for the lives that you have prepared beforehand for us to touch with your word. Lord, thank you for the laughter and the wonderful time that we share in our lives and get us through the hard times. May all glory and honor come back to you in everything that we do. It is in Jesus's name that we believe and pray. Amen. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. Good night.